Well, pound on the hammer. Five thirty. I'll see you in order, Mr. Suster. Will you call the roll, please? Bulleye. Yes, like thirty.
Present.
This is Stuart Campbell. And Dr. Belgrade. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Suster. We're ready for our pledge of allegiance.
(singing) Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is that McFlor? Thank you to the young students at McFlor Elementary for that. Entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second? Dr. Morrison offers a second and any discussion? Not seeing where to go. Okay, okay. Votes are, uh, right back together. Is there any way? I'll make up that it was... This plate, there's a red box up in your right-hand corner where it says change vote. It just disappeared on mine, but... There you go. Oh, now everybody has to go again. Okay, we're gonna vote again. There's a box up there. You can do it if you want and tell Mr. Suster to tabulate some. Okay. All votes are in. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we've got an agenda. Public communications. Mr. Suster, we have one person, I think, and you're gonna read that person's public communication. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Go ahead. It's from Mr. Richard Bollajock, 1915, Southwest Webster, Topeka, Kansas. And his comment is, "We are in challenging times with COVID-19 and reopening schools for the coming school year. I understand how leaders in our community at stake are having to make hard decisions regards to what is best to keep everyone safe. I appreciate how the district has made the effort to include staff input with Zoom sessions and a survey and how it's clear..." I am very thankful with all the efforts that our district is making to ensure the safety of everyone. Thank you." Are there any other public communications? We're ready to dispose of business by consent? Entertain a motion for that activity?
Mr. President, I move the board to approve the items of business by consent as presented and authorize the board president or superintendent to sign the special project purchasing contracts for and on behalf of the board.
Have a motion. Do we have a second? This bully offers a second. Any discussion? Any sort of ready to vote? All votes are in and the motion carries unanimously. Were the committees on that? I can't remember. Did we put the committees on? Okay. Only items that were changed on that was... Ramford and Dr. Haggins. Okay, we're ready for our trainers.
Good evening. What an exciting week we have had. This evening, our staff retreat is listed as the topic. As you know from previous months, the initial piece of the staff retreat is an individual from KSBA to start us off with the role of a board member. And that was part of the retreat originally planned and that guest is here. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Cope, our school board attorney, who will give a proper introduction and then we will begin with that brief presentation. And then the rest of this evening, we'll be talking during this retreat about the school reopening plan. I'll turn it over to Mrs. Cope.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right. Good evening. I am happy to introduce Dr. Brian Jordan, who works for the Kansas Association of School Boards. I had the privilege of working with Dr. Jordan for many years and there is no one better to talk boards through the foundations of the tenants of what they need to do to be great boards and great board members. And so I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Jordan and let him have this conversation with you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cope. As she just introduced me, I'm with Kansas Association of School Boards and thank you for the opportunity to come out and visit with you all this evening about some of the foundational components of great school boards. And some of you that have served on the board for many years will have probably heard some of the things I'm gonna visit with you tonight about, but it's also a good reminder and a good time of the year to talk a little bit about what some of these foundation pieces are as we transition into a new fiscal year. Talk about getting schools reopened again. There's some key things in here we'll discuss tonight that hopefully sparks some conversation. I'm gonna have you share some examples as we go throughout this this evening, but hopefully it'll spur some thoughts and reminders for you. Whenever we work with school boards, we often use analogies or try to get people to think about other examples of things in life that would be analogous or similar to what a school board or how a school board functions. So I've got a picture up here on the screen. First off, somebody, what is that that's up there on the screen? Yeah, fire watch tower. So why do we have fire watch towers? Yeah, we're looking for fires. So the people in the watch tower, their function is to look out there across the forest and see, is there places where there's hot spots? Are there places where we need to scramble folks to get to take care of that issue that's out there in the forest that's a scoldering fire? Maybe it's a raging fire by the time they see it. So why would we use that as an analogy for the work of a school board? Any thoughts? I know some of you had this when you went through new board member training, so maybe I didn't do a very good job keeping it at that point. What are your thoughts, Michael? Absolutely. Your role as a school board is to take that big picture view, look across the community, look across your schools and see, are the schools functioning with what we believe they need to be doing for our kids and our community? What we talk about with school boards, if you play this analogy out a little bit, is your role is to stay in that tower and keep that perspective. Sometimes people wanna jump out of the tower and go take care of that issue that they see happening out there in their school or in their community. And what we remind board members is, when you jump out of that tower, you lose perspective. And you may see that burning issue that's happening out there in a school in your community, but as soon as you jump out of that tower and go try to take care of that as an individual, you'll lose perspective on how that's impacting the rest of your system. And it also puts you in an awkward position of having a whole lot of information and context that the rest of your board doesn't have. And so when you come back and try to fix that issue, as I say, fix with quotes, it's very difficult for the board to really look at that issue from the same level when one person has a whole lot of extra information from their view or their perception. There is one individual that gets to run up and down that tower. Who would that be? That's your superintendent. And she's great at getting out in your community, getting out in your schools and seeing where those issues are, seeing where those things are. Your task as the board is to make sure that you've got a great relationship with that superintendent so that you're communicating, you're able to be on the same page with those issues that you're seeing. So when you're in that watch tower and you're communicating and building that relationship with your superintendent, we talked about, there's really seven ways or duties that you have as a board or authorities that you have as a board to direct that work across your school district. And so those seven areas are listed up here on the screen. The first one is policies. You all adopt policy, you set policy, and we like to call policy as the law of the school district. It really sets the standard and really sets the parameters and boundaries of what's acceptable within your school district. The policy obviously is modified or changed by what the state law or legislature tells us and also around what the state form of education does. The next area up there is handbooks. So you have policy, but then you, on an annual basis, are taking a look at these handbooks. And there's staff handbooks, there's student handbooks, there's activity handbooks, a variety of handbooks that you deal with in your district. And that's another form of policy. Those handbooks have to be in sync with the policy, but the handbooks also spell out, okay, so you adopted a policy, but what's that actually look like in practice? What's that look like for that family that has a kid involved in an activity or that teacher that's working in that school building? What does that policy actually mean for me in my day-to-day work or my activities that my kids are involved in? That's a way that you shape the expectations. You kind of shape what you want the culture and climate of your district to look like by the policies you adopt and the handbooks that you hope align to that policy. Another area is the directives to the superintendent. So if you dig into the policies and if you ever want some really exciting reading, you can dig into the policies and read through them. And a lot of times it will say, "The board shall," or "The board will direct." Well, that's a way of saying that you're gonna direct the superintendent to execute that policy or to uphold that policy within your system. So you've gotta have that great working relationship with the superintendent. Remember, that's the one person that gets to run up and down that tower, to work with the people that are out there in your schools and make sure that they're doing the work that aligns with the policy that you've established in your form of education. Another key area that you have is the evaluation of your superintendent. So if something is not working, that's how you get that communication across. So you outline that in that evaluation. Or if something's going great, that's an opportunity to affirm and assure your superintendent that, hey, you're hitting the mark with what we expect. And the evaluation of your superintendent is done in a manner with the seventeen contenders to agree that on how that's perfect, that's accurate in your district. The next area that you see up there is establishing those broad overarching goals and priorities. Those broad overarching goals and priorities set the direction for policies that you adopt and it helps the rest of the district that's out there working in your schools really understand what's the most important thing. You have a superintendent that's working with leaders in the district. The leaders are working with the other teachers and other leaders in the district. And it's a whole lot easier if everybody's operating on the same page with goals and priorities that you've established. That's a critical thing that you spend some time to make sure that we're all working off the same page. Negotiated agreements, another key area that you have a lot of influence. If you've been on the board long, you know that's an area where you sit down and you talk directly with your teachers. And you're talking about expectations, but you're also trying to figure out, how do we make this a great place to be? And how do we make sure that we're addressing needs that you see in the buildings and that you see in your day-to-day work? And make sure that we're aligning all of those parts and needs. That's another area where you get a system to align. And finally, the foundation of all of this is how we put the resources where we've set our goals are, where we've set our goals and priorities. The last area up there is those allocation of resources. So questions about those seven duties or seven authorities that you have as a board of education? Go to the next slide. So we like to talk a little bit about how school boards are different than maybe some traditional boards. So a school board is what we call the governance board. So you have these seven authorities or duties that you use to govern the system. So you're looking at, you're using those seven authorities to make sure that what's happening in your schools is the priorities of the community. Some other examples of governance boards that we see, board of trustees at a bank or the board that governs a hospital. And so this is, I always put this in here because sometimes people, because everybody's been through school, everybody has their own perception or their own understanding of it. If you take the analogy of a hospital board and the people that serve on a hospital board, it's probably pretty rare that you see a hospital board member going out, jumping out of their watchtower and going out and trying to make sure that the doctors are doing their job right and that they're holding the nurses accountable for doing their jobs right. And so I use that as an example to try to get you to realize that school boards aren't the only thing that... Really keep that broad perspective, you get a higher... The other type of board that a lot of people have experience with and that may have been their only type of board that they've served on before coming onto a school board are what we call the working board. So think of your church boards. You ever been on a church board? It's you rolling up your sleeves and going and putting the paint on the walls or going and fixing the things that need to be fixed in the church or you're on the trustee committee, you're sitting down and pressing down. If you're on a fair board, it's you going out and getting the fair around ready. That's a different type of board. There really is no staff or say, a very minimal staff or anything. Mission and the vision of... So there's a little bit of a difference between those and we always put that in there kind of as a reminder. So kind of to bring that watchtower analogy to a close, the role of the school board is to make sure, or let me read the quote, "The board's job is to not run the district, but to make sure that the districts run well." And once you jump out of the tower and you get down there and you start trying to fight the fire, so to speak, or you're out there trying to do the investigation in a school, you're trying to pull this piece of information out and trying to bring it to this table, you've now stepped over somebody's role within your system because you have people within your system that the superintendent's trying to direct and trying to support to do the key work that happens. I don't remember my next slide, but I need a prompt. All right. So I'll leave that piece on the watchtower with this quote. "Culture eats strategy for breakfast." What's that mean? Yeah, yeah. So we can spend all kinds of resources and time and energy on a strategy, but if we haven't established the right culture to support that, it doesn't matter. And I worked in districts all over the state of Kansas and they'll spend a lot of time and a lot of resources talking about the latest curriculum adoption, about the latest plan of X, Y, and Z, but it all falls apart or it all crumbles if they don't have a culture that can sustain and support it. How great boards build the right culture is by keeping that perspective, using those seven authorities and staying in that big picture view that are happening within your school, picking up the cause of a very vocal group and losing perspective of that big picture. I wanna talk a little bit about what would be some of the fundamentals that we would see in a great functioning school board. When I talk about fundamentals, I've used some photos up there to give you what I'm getting at. Anybody that's ever, you know, played a sport or played an instrument, you start with the fundamentals. And it's the same fundamentals that a high-level performer uses playing the violin and somebody that's picking up the violin for the first time has to learn that they just master. For that sports star, that's an NBA player, a football player, they mastered those fundamentals. fundamentals to the point where obviously they're at the highest level of performance. Let's talk a little bit more about what those fundamentals meant. So I want you to think about, just take 10 seconds, think about what would be some fundamentals that, that great school boards have to have in place to get that culture right so that your strategy becomes, okay? So take a moment, think about what would be some fundamentals of, of great board or individual serving on great boards that allow that culture to work. What's one of them that comes to mind? Back here. Abs- absolutely. You enjoy being around your teammates and, and you can work with one another. And when I, when I think of a positive relationship, I think about, we're pushing for the same thing. And, and we're here and, and, and we're, we're trying to build this relationship so that when the times get tough or we do have one of those tough issues, we're going to be rowing the boat in the same direction because we know we're pushing for it. I had too many words in my mouth that I, okay, good. What's another, what's another fundamental? Listening. Absolutely. That's, you know, we always throw out the word communication and listening is the other half of communication. So when people communicate, they also have to listen. And so I maybe get very passionate about what I believe is the right thing, but I also need to listen to my fellow board members to make sure that I'm understanding where they're coming from, with their concerns, uh, and, and understanding that before I jump to, uh, a conclusion or jump to maybe a misperception, uh, if I'm, who else? That would be a fundamental of a good board or that would be something that would be a, yeah. So, so too narrow of an agenda leads to, uh, putting the, or go back to the watchtower. If my agenda's too narrow, I'm only looking at one section of the forest because that impacts my kid or that impacts the school that my kid goes to. And you lose perspective then. And then what that does to the rest of your board members is, well, we're, you know, don't they understand it's about all kids in this community and it's about all services and supports that we have to provide, not just kids for that school or just kids for that, uh, for, that, that have that set of services. One more. Keep the main thing the main thing. That's exactly right. So great boards, keep that perspective. What are we going to do as a collective board to keep our students' success at the forefront? And, and that has to be the number one thing that you're, that you're working towards. Sue's point of too narrow agenda, sometimes that gets lost because we don't think about all kids and the success of all kids. So you guys basically nailed a lot of the things that are on this next slide, so I'm going to advance this slide here. So when we talk about the fundamentals of great boards, these are, these are kind of the personal fundamentals that I have to develop as an individual. If I want to contribute successfully to this, this board team so that our strategies can be effective. So as I look down through here, number one on that list, Mike mentioned it, "Keep learning and achievement for all students is the primary focus." So we make that our, our, we constantly come back through that lens and talk about when we're, when we're considering this adoption that maybe seems far away from that, how does that connect with our kids and help them? "Value support and advocate for public education." So that kind of gets into Sue's point when she talked about that narrow agenda. If my agenda gets too narrow, I'm not worried about the entire public education system. I'm worried about my kids' education or I'm worried about just a very small group of kids' education. I need to advocate for all students in the public education system. So respect differences of perspective and style on the board among staff, students, parents, and community. That kind of gets back to your original point, the positive relationships. I have to respect your differences and have to understand where they're coming from. So I've got to listen to them. And I can only do that relationship building by truly listening, try to understand, have some empathy and try to really figure out where you're seeing the perspective or the perspective you're sustaining from versus where I see it. Understand that manners and behaviors make a difference. So I, I think about going to school boards and, and I work with a lot of boards that maybe are having some struggles and, and a lot of times it comes back to manners and behaviors. Example, some examples of, like, not doing their homework. So they don't show up to the board meeting prepared. Uh, they haven't read their package, they haven't gone through their information. Uh, they're, they're trying to lob questions out to catch people off guard or trying to surprise people or make people look bad. Those behaviors impact your culture, eventually cause it to become negative, and then now you've got a problem. Keep confidential information confidential. So you have a duty and obligation by law to make sure that things that you talk about in executive session stay in executive session. Uh, I'm sure you've been through training with, with Lori because she's, uh, very good at, at talking about what does the law say about confidentiality? You all have executive session. Reason you have executive session is because there's things in there that you can talk about that could be damaging to the individuals that you're discussing if it gets out into the public. So you have to keep those perspectives aligned. That ties directly to the behavior. Commit the time and energy is doing your homework, that kind of connects with the behavior. Understand roles and responsibilities of the board. So that's what we've spent a little bit of time tonight talking about. Do we understand that perspective, those duties that we have as board members? Understand the authority rests with the board as a whole. This one is sometimes tough for folks that have just got onto the board of education. They got on with the board, they wanted, they want to make a difference in their community, they want to be supportive of the students, they want to be supportive of the staff. But the reality is, you only can do those things when you get at least four other people in this collective group to, to believe and buy into that direction that you think things need to go. And this becomes a whole lot easier to do when we're operating from the same page from a goals and perspective standpoint, or a goals and priorities standpoint. So that one's tough because you're, you're going to pick up the phone, you're going to have people call you and you want to help them. Reality is, your best thing to do in those situations is listen and then coach. Coach them back to, how can they get their issue most resolved in the quickest manner? I have a slide in here where, where we'll talk just briefly about that, but, uh, understand your role is to, to listen, have empathy, get them back to the level of, in the quickest manner and, and help them. Yep? Oh, I'm sorry, my, my mic was dropping there. Yes, thank you. Uh, so, uh, keep, keep that in mind. Uh, and one of the things I always remind board members, if, if you're the person that always picks up the phone and says, "I'll fix that for you," you're going to be more tired and frustrated than you've ever been. Because the reality is, you have to have the rest of the board going along with you to make those changes and, and, and help those folks. Work hard to build and sustain an effective governance team. So this culture piece that I'm talking about just doesn't happen magically. It's like any relationship that we've ever been in. It only works when we, when we put the time and energy in to make it happen. And so that's a key takeaway from that as well. So when I was talking about helping people understand where they can get their issues addressed, where, what level they need to connect with, uh, this is a, this is an example of what we're talking about. So we call it the lines of communication. We used to call it, uh, chain of command. That sounded too military, that sounded too rigid. But lines of communication, how can I help people best get their issue solved and at the lowest level? So example, I've got daughters in school and if I had a problem with my daughter's grades or how her grades were handled, I probably wouldn't start with the board member, I probably should start with the teacher. Cause the, the reality is, the teacher gets to determine how that grade gets put on that paper. And so when that patron calls you with a concern about how their student has been handled, their first step, it's a simple question, have you talked to the student's teacher? If they have, and then the next thing you need to say, well, you probably need to sit down with the teacher and the principal and have that conversation. Help them understand how they get their issue best resolved at the lowest level. So this is just an example of what we, we use with boards to kind of frame for people. We've had districts take this and actually put this up there, uh, on a webpage and, and use that as the guide for board members and as for patrons to really understand how they can get their issues resolved in a timely manner. Kind of takes the pressure off you as board members to try to fix everybody's issue because now here's the clear line of how, uh, we can get your issue or get your need addressed within our system. I think the last slide that I want to touch on tonight, and we'll have, then we'll open, open up for some more questions if you have any, is, this, I'll leave you with this. You guys have a finite amount of time that you spend in this room working on, on helping kids be successful within the system. And, and so why, why I say that is, you're, you're all paid, uh, well, I know to do this job. Um, uh, it's all volunteer, everybody gets that. And, and so you can't devote the immense amount of time that your superintendent and their team do. You have a finite amount of time that you can devote towards the success of your students. And, and so we talk about, how do we make sure and prioritize that we're spending our time in the right places? And this is a, a, a simple grid, uh, that, that has different quadrants. Um, and, and we start up there in the upper left-hand quadrant, and it's called the quadrant of urgency and necessity. So from time to time, there's things that are urgent, they have to be acted on. The example that you see up there is the boiler goes out in a school. Uh, you know, it goes out on a Saturday, it's the middle of January, we've got to scramble, have a special board meeting because this is going to be a big ticket item. We have to get that thing approved so the school can get back, uh, up and running. So from time to time, you have to have some of those quick, it gets thrown on the agenda during a special board meeting, we got to address that. Shouldn't have a ton of those things because that's taking time away from that finite amount of time that you have. Quadrant number two, not urgent but important, that's the big picture. And, and these are those things that we're talking about. How are we shifting systems? How are we shifting processes in our district to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our kids? We're helping, we're setting kids up to be successful. Those things take, take study, those things take resources, uh, they have to have a direction, there has to be a plan to put those pieces in place. Think strategic planning, think, think shifting a, a culture and think, uh, a, a different direction with a program within your system. That's big picture items. Those things are critical, but they're, they're, they're not urgent. You have to study those, you have to take the time to study them. I, I would argue they're urgent from the success standpoint of your kids, but they're not, they get dropped on the agenda on Friday, you're acting on them on a Monday night. You know you're going to be chipping away at those things over time. These bottom two quadrants that you see up here are the two greatest areas that suck boards' time away from that paperwork that's in the top half of the chart. The third quadrant there in the lower left-hand corner is the quadrant of deception. I spend a lot of times at board meetings where, where there's reports given and the, the information in the report's great, but at the end of the report, most everything that was shared could have been read and questions asked in the board meeting without spending 30 to 40 minutes going through blow-by-blow reports. So example that I give you up here is like a principal's report. That could be something that you read, you've done your prep work, you've got questions, you can get that back to Dr. Anderson and her team, she can get those questions answered or those questions that you ask in the board meeting. And it doesn't take the 30 minutes to go through it, it takes three to four minutes to go through. Then the quadrant number four on the lower right-hand side, not urgent, not important. I like to call this the quadrant, uh, that you probably have somebody to do that job. And, and what I mean by that is the, the example that I give you up, up there is last week's basketball game. So if, if we have that, that narrow agenda coming in like Sue was talking about, this person always wants to talk about the success of that basketball team. Well, you have people in your system that evaluate your coaches, they, they evaluate the direction of a program, uh, and, and they give recommendations to a principal to hire people, dismiss people, and ultimately you approve a contract, but you have people that take care of those issues. Another example of something that would consume time here is, is, is maybe how a situation happened or a student was handled, uh, and, and there's a disagreement over the policy and how the policy was implemented. There's a lot of layers that have to be addressed before that ends up on your lap. But you're going to get the phone call from the upset parent, that you need to let that parent know, you need to try to resolve that in a timely, efficient manner by working with the principal or working directly with that teacher. So those things can suck your time away and you'll have a lot of time that you're, you're sitting there going, man, we need to get to the important stuff, but we're spending all of our time talking about coaches, we're spending all of our time talking about some of these issues that we have people, we should have systems in place to address these. So I kind of ran through a lot of those fundamental pieces. What questions do you all have?
To give a brief example, I received an email this week from an angry parent who was angry at a coach. And I just responded, "We have systems in place to address that." I'm glad you copied that coach's, his, uh, principal in this email, I'm sure.
Yeah. Yeah, that's perfect. What we, what we tell board members to do is note, or what we tell board members, nobody likes to be surprised. So if that call comes to you, Scott, there's a high likelihood that call may come into another board member. So have a process for dealing with that. I'm sure Dr. Anderson's got a process. If you're hearing a concern from a parent, maybe not to the third coaching or some other issue, make sure Dr. Anderson's in the loop on that so the rest of the board can be in the loop. Because there's nothing more awkward and damaging to a culture than when you show up and, and you're over here going, well, the coach of this place is just not doing a very good job and the rest of the board's going, well, I've not heard any of it. How do you know all this and, you know? And it starts to shake the foundation of trust and communication within your culture. That's a great example. Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions or examples even? And I would be willing to bet, there would be at least two different answers if seven people responded. Uh, what we would recommend is if the whole board has gotten that email, you defer to your superintendent or your board president on those issues. Uh, and, and that's, that would be our recommendation. So, and, and you'll have, you'll have patrons or stakeholders that, that will, uh, hold or try to push by, by calling every board member and saying, "Hey, I have a real issue with this." That's why that communication relationship with your superintendent is so critical, that you can email or call, uh, Dr. Anderson and say, "Hey, I got a email that this parent's really upset about this or this patron's really upset about this, just a heads up. I told them to talk to you or told them to talk to the principal." Uh, but that relationship helps with that. If you've got that positive relationship like you talked about, that helps you be in sync with your, with your superintendent to deal with those issues. And now there can be a unified message that comes out because superintendent can follow up and say, "Hey, we'll look into that, we'll, we'll, we'll give the board an update after we've looked into that." Or the board president, it just depends on your culture. Every, every board's a little bit different, but our recommend, recommended process would be for, uh, to, to let your superintendent address that or one of her team members address that and then get follow-up from that, uh, process so that you are getting a unified answer and response. So if that person calls you and you can say, "Hey, I know Dr. Anderson and her team was looking into that, uh, and, and we are expecting to get an update in the near future." But it's very, it's a slippery slope if, if you start having individual board members respond to those because there, there will be seven different opinions most likely of how that should be handled or, or, or what the beliefs are of who should even handle that. So having that process in place where you use your superintendent, uh, to address some of those issues is what we recommend.
So some of those emails, I'm guessing are blind copied. If you've got 30 emails in the last three days like I did, I'm guessing that everybody did, but most of them are blind copied. And so we don't always know who's received them. But I think the advice is still strong in that, you know, I mean, I, I typically, just how I handle it, I acknowledge that I received it and share my own brief comment of, you know, I understand your position, I believe, and you know, I'll do my best to do my best.
Yeah, and pass that along to, to the people that actually can address that and, and, and deal with that issue. But yeah, you, it's, it's the same as if you get the phone call, acknowledge it, have some empathy, share with them your next steps, coach them, what's the proper channel for getting their issue addressed? Uh, and we're spending time talking about teachers or, excuse me, students and patrons, but sometimes it's teachers that call you and say, "I'm really upset about X, Y, and Z that's happened to me," or "Really upset about X, Y, and Z that's happening from a programming standpoint." Here again, though, you as an individual can't fix that issue, but there's a team of people in your district that need some, need to know some of that. Share that information with your superintendent so they're aware of that and they can start to work on that issue. But, but have some empathy, let them know, "Hey, I hear your concern, I'm going to forward that on to this, on to the superintendent, but you need to check in with the principal, you should check in with the program issue." Let them know your concerns. Any others?
I'll just comment, most of the time when I do that, um, I'll say, uh, "I'll look into that for you." And then I send it to the, you know, either superintendent, easily the superintendent or, um, um, principal, um, and urge the, you, you, the teacher, a parent to go to the person. Sometimes they'll say, "Well, I talked to the teacher, I talked to the principal." And then, so I'll go to the next person up, uh, whether it's Billy Wallace or, and I'll look into it, um, and I'll get back with you, um, after I look into it. And many times, the, you know, Billy Wallace or the principal will have taken care of it. And they'll send me an email and say, "This is what we did."
Yeah, and there again, that, that finite amount of time piece, you're all volunteering to do this, the folks that are, that are on this side of the room, they're, they're hired to deal with that, take care of those issues. Uh, and, and so that's great that that process is in place. That's how it should work.
I always, every time I get anything, I'll, um, see to the superintendent, I just want her to know everything that's going on.
I'm sure Dr. Anderson appreciates that, right? Yeah, and there's another piece of, another piece to this that I, that I remind board members of is, a- as you listen to the, the parent or as you listen to that patron, um, sometimes they, they don't get the answer that they want because a policy's been implemented or you have a piece in place. So you kind of have to tease some of that out and, and yeah, I've talked to the teacher, yeah, I've talked to the principal. Well, follow-up, wha- what, what did they tell you? And if they're following the policy, that, that's, that's the policy on those situations. Still helpful to forward that information, uh, but sometimes they'll just keep going up the chain and they're not happy with the answer they're getting because the policy says, uh, that's not what we do for, for that situation. And so sometimes asking a few follow-up questions helps Dr. Anderson really know what's the core issue there, uh, when you forward that information on. Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to come out and visit. There's our number, well, our number was up there or you can talk to Dr. Anderson or, or Lori, know where I'm at, uh, just give me a call, we're happy to help you. Thank you for your service to the kids of Topeka, uh, and, and the greater, uh, kids of campus. We appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. Good evening. And normally I don't come up here to this space and I may be up here for a bit of a minute and maybe tag teaming a little bit. Before we start, we do have this wonderful picture that, uh, was taken and, um, as we went whitewater rafting as a team, it was one of our retreat, uh, team building activities. It was an imaginary raft and, um, for those that have been whitewater rafting as we bring that photo up, my goodness, this is just speaking of the times. And actually, one of our team members who helped make this picture possible, Dr. Gray, uh, is, forgot to put himself in the picture. And so that tells you how much that some of our leaders are working so much in the background that, um, we really are making sure that everybody's got what they need. And I will tell you just as a piece about this piece as we jump into this plan, Dr. Hackett is the one that actually mentioned this, uh, picture and she shared it with principals today and she actually had a picture of whitewater rafting and she asked, has anyone ever done that before? And as they raised their hands, uh, for those that haven't done it, out of curiosity, have you been whitewater rafting? Okay, I should have known, many of the board members, except Reverend Williams and I. And so, uh, with that, if you haven't gone whitewater rafting, uh, she shared how the person stands and they welcome you, the person that's leading that raft and generally says to the rest of the folks, said, okay, we're going to be going down this new river. I've never gotten on it before, but we're going to be okay. You just got to follow my directions. Okay? And so when I say row to the right, you got to row to the right. When I say go to the left, go to the left. And she shared, okay, so when we do that, if I, the direction I go, we have to work as a team and go in the same direction. Man, this has been some teamwork. And so she mentioned that at this time, I'm having the opportunity to be the guide for this raft and we're, uh, in some uncharted territory and a whole new, uh, lane and a, and a body of water that we have not been in before. And while this is my twenty-seventh year and most of which is superintendent, this one is quite new for me as it is for all of us. So in this new body of water, I just ask for our staff and families to continue to have grace, uh, with us and patience and so that we might, uh, step on a, or go around a, a stone or a big rock every now and then, but we will certainly go through this course together in a way that allows us to correct what we need and allows us to listen, listen to learn, not just to respond and, uh, and certainly allows us to, uh, be better for it in support of our students. Uh, for those that don't know, those are my leadership team members in that raft and they helped make this plan possible. So an acknowledgement for them, I just want to thank all of them from the deputy to the attorney, uh, school board attorney to Ms. Wallace. So Deputy Robbins is joining for the purpose of, uh, this room and making sure that our space in this room is, um, as small as possible. Uh, Mr. Robbins is joining by Zoom but is in this building. Uh, Mrs. Kope, our school board attorney, is also joining by Zoom. Uh, Ms. Wallace is here in the room with us, our assistant superintendent, our associate superintendent, the whitewater rafter, if I'm saying this properly, uh, Dr. Hackett is in the room with us as well. Uh, Mr. Gallin, uh, the happy one right up front is happily helping us with technology. Thank you, uh, Mr. Gallin. Uh, and Mr. Kip, Dr. Kip, my apologies, Dr. Kip has also, uh, been part of really helping collect the surveys and make the surveys. Uh, and I will tell you that there are many people also behind the scenes, including our KNEA. And so our KNEA president, uh, who is behind the scenes, who, uh, just so thoughtfully made the comments to start us off and also sent me an email, is right now looking at calendars and looking at how we really work with the, uh, beginning of the school year in the future and that's yet to be determined, but the fact that the teachers are really coming together to collaborate, uh, at my request to just take that on, you know, uh, we have a lot of things on our plate, they can take that on and give us a proposal and they're excited to plan with that in mind. So we'll be getting some opportunity to have future conversation quite possibly about what that looks like, uh, from them. Now with that, we're going to jump into the plan. There are three things that we're going to do and what we'll do is to kind of stop it in each section. It's a rather lengthy plan. And so, uh, we'll first start off with telling you what our teacher said from the most recent survey. Those survey results were posted today online for parents or teachers that like to look at them, et cetera, I believe the parent resource tab. We thank Dr. Gray for doing that. Do we have the survey results available? Okay, and so, and if we have those survey results ready, then we'll pull those up. If we don't have the survey results quite handy yet, we'll go to those on the website and we'll be able to show the rest of the public where those are located. I will share with you the following steps. Remember previously we had gave out a survey at the end of the year about, uh, our online, um, our online, uh, opportunities, our virtual remote learning opportunities. We also gave another survey to our staff and families about what options they would like to see occur. We next gave another survey, uh, to our staff regarding what they would like to see occur based on the three options that we all know exist. Either you're in school, you're out of school, or you're in school halftime. And what we learned from our survey from parents, they wanted all the options, okay? They wanted to see all the options. So rather than saying, what would you like on one option, just we continued surveying our staff, here are all the options, the last survey did not narrow it down for us any further, just give us feedback on, on everything. And they did, and we had great response. So here's the response. Uh, again, this is posted, we had one thousand two hundred and eighty-one responses. And so, uh, we certainly had, uh, over, uh, approximately fifty percent or more of our staff responded. Uh, moving from that, in there, the, uh, most of the teachers, uh, were the respondents. Uh, we also had parents and some administrators and then people in other categories, but the majority of people responding were teachers, about sixty-five percent or so. Uh, and really quickly I'll go through the next areas, uh, uh, so sixty percent were teachers. Uh, the first question was about a delayed start. We wanted to know that, uh, we wanted to know if they supported a delayed in-person start to school, uh, which would mean that instead school would begin remotely or virtually on the regularly scheduled start date in August. That was the very first question. Our teachers.
I can't read the graph.
So I'll just speak to the, uh, particular percentages, but we'll make that graph a little bit larger in terms of the numbers. And I think if you go to the very next slide, it'll show the actual numbers for us. Uh, so the first one just shows the graph and you can see the green is more, uh, saying yes, but the numbers, which we'll make a little bit larger for you. Uh, the question was, do you support a delayed in, uh, in-person start? And seventy percent of our teachers, seventy point eight-four, said yes. As we move from there, fifteen percent said no, uh, thirteen point five-five said, uh, other. As we move from there, the next question was, if masks are not a state requirement by August the twelfth, uh, then, uh, would they still support wearing a mask? We're going to go to the very next item where we see the numbers. Uh, eighty-eight, and we'll make that a little bit larger, point, uh, eleven percent said yes, they support wearing masks even if they weren't required by the state. So we know majority of our teachers would like to see that. We have and can do that and many young people are wearing masks in the community now, so it's becoming a part of clothing that many people are getting more used to. Uh, but we'll talk about that a little bit more momentarily. Uh, very quickly, we'll go to the very next few, uh, slides because this is a little bit of what feeds into our plan. The teacher's, uh, next question was, um, uh, we'll, we'll go to the next slide so we can see the numbers. I would agree to reducing groups congregating through the following. We're going to make that a little bit larger. Uh, and they agreed with pretty much the majority of these. Teachers agreed that locker utilization should be reduced or eliminated where possible. Class changes should be minimal where possible. The fine arts, uh, uh, would be offered although instruments and singing may be initially restricted, uh, or eliminated. Uh, outdoor lunch should be allowed when possible, uh, and outdoor recess should be allowed and students will be required to wash hands upon returning. So those are really some of the things teachers felt like they would be agreeable to. And generally it was over fifty-five percent and up to maybe eighty percent on those graphs. The remaining questions, and I will tell you, we're not going to go through every question because there are, uh, twenty, over twenty questions on this survey. We're going to highlight just two more. Uh, the, uh, next question, uh, that we're going to highlight is really talking about schedules and then we're going to jump into some items of our plan unless the board would like to have questions about any of the, uh, items that we're talking about. Uh, so the next question, question twelve and thirteen. The question was during, uh, virtual remote learning, mental health services should be provided in person and, uh, that is an eighty-seven percent. So in our plan, we are talking about social emotional services. And if you want to know why that's in our plan, our teachers want to see that that's in our plan, that whether we are in school or on a hybrid or on a remote learning, uh, those services in some fashion should be provided. We'll be talking about that. The very, uh, final item that I will mention on this survey that stood out, uh, we did ask about temperature checks and majority of teachers said they would like to see that. We asked if only half of, uh, our students came to school and the other half remained on remote, what would you prefer? And fifty-eight percent of our teachers said they would prefer that students join their regular class by Zoom or Google Hangouts to be counted present with the rest of the class. So all, all of our students would learn at the same time. That would mean a math teacher could be teaching math, a student can zoom in from their home and, uh, all of our students would be together in class at the same time. Okay? So fifty-eight point five, uh, eight percent shared that they would like to see that. Eighteen percent shared they'd have, like, for the students to have a remote lesson, uh, taught separately by them, uh, at a separate time. And everyone that said other, uh, that really was a remote lesson generally taught by someone else. Okay? And that other category, just so that you know, is twenty-three percent. But fifty-eight percent agreed that having young people zoom in to be part of the regular class if all could not be there. Now with that information, we're going to jump into, uh, our plan. And, uh, in our plan, we have a PowerPoint that repeats a lot of the PowerPoint from previously, but we also have the plan itself. So that plan itself, uh, the, uh, hard copy documents, uh, that, uh, you may have, we will be pulling up, uh, on the screen, uh, and if, uh, approved, we will be posting that. Uh, if it is delayed, then we will, uh, also be still, uh, sharing it for comment in ways that you'd like to see, if you'd like to see that occur. Uh, we're going to, uh, jump right on in first to the PowerPoint that we have. And the PowerPoint, I'm only going to mention two, uh, key slides. And, um, the PowerPoint, uh, I believe, is there a PowerPoint i- item as well before we jump into the hard copy of this document? Our plan is called transforming Topeka together because we believe that much like that whitewater raft, we have this opportunity to transform what learning looks like. Earlier today, Topeka, uh, was really highlighted in talking about some of our systems and getting feedback as we respond, reimagine, um, and prepare to restart. So transforming and being transformational in our thinking is really our goal here. We're working together as a team, which is why we have tried to do as many surveys and feedback sessions. Uh, on our slides, we're not, we're going to remind those that weren't with us previously, our planning committee, the next slide after that really includes people that served on the KSDE committee. It also includes a Topeka planning committee. As a reminder for those that weren't with us before, this actually is a bit of a new piece in terms of, it's not new for us in terms of process, it may be new from you in terms of informational, in terms of the decision-making grid. So we have either a sub- a substantial spread and we explain what does that mean, a minimal spread of the COVID, uh, disease or a low to no spread. So really things fall in three categories for us. If there's no spread of, uh, the COVID, uh, virus, then, uh, certainly students could all come back right now if there were no spread at this time. We're not in that space. So we are in the sa- space right now of substantial spread, which means we either don't have school or we're on remote. And then that middle section really is when there's minimal spread, we have the options, um, traditional or hybrid or distance learning. Those are all three different options that we're going to talk about this evening. So moving from there, in our surveys, as a reminder, we just gave to you, we previously gave a community survey. Fifty-six percent, uh, from the community survey shared that they had an interest in, um, beginning with remote or virtual learning. Staff and student temperatures, eighty-five percent said they'd like to see those checked in some fashion. And then the full-time virtual, thirty-four percent of our families shared they'd like to be full-time virtual and certainly majority of our families agreed that they would wear masks. So those survey items specifically we wanted to mention, uh, as a reminder, previously we won't spend much time on this, the only other two slides, the very next one, uh, really again talks about the staff survey that we just highlighted. And the final one that we will just reference is really about staffing because that really does impact what we're able to do as well. So in addition to who we can get to school, we also want to be thinking about our staffing. If the virus, uh, continues to spread or has adverse impacts on this community, it can impact how many staff are actually at school or able to come to school, which could include subs. And so in our staffing approach, our staff director, uh, Mrs. Randberg, our general director of human resources, has put together a proposal and she, uh, is actually a human resource professional from Stormont, D. So she has quite a bit of knowledge about the healthcare system, uh, as it relates to human resources. I will tell you that HR right now is exploring options to increase staffing with substitutes using other vendor services such as a temporary agency on top of the subs that we already have. So with having the subs that we already have, uh, many of them have already expressed a desire to return. And fortunately, KSDE has given flexibility with us getting emergency substitute licenses immediately, uh, through this year. So we're also able to do that. That actually is being advertised through communications, uh, all throughout next week and I believe it starts at the end of this week. So we're excited about that, just adding to our pool at this time as a contingency plan in addition to a service provider, uh, in addition to the subs, uh, approximately a hundred and eighty who've said that they would like to return, uh, somewhere in between a hundred and fifty and a hundred and eighty at this point. I have not checked the most recent number, but it was at a hundred and fifty about two weeks ago, uh, and we know that more have continued to call in and apply. Uh, we do want you to know that HR will be following the quarantine regulations, uh, and again, we'll talk more about that. Our staff are also online and so as you have questions, I'll be asking that team on that whitewater raft to just jump on in and answer those. Uh, the remaining three items on here, uh, talks a little bit about health-related matters and as those arise, uh, human resources will be addressing that case by case with our staff. Uh, and people have different situations and so we're encouraging staff to contact human resources if they currently know that they have some underlying health conditions or other matters that will prevent them from returning. HR will be offering an online benefits, uh, orientation and so HR has really moved to a very virtual format as another staffing piece that we want you to be aware of. And lastly, we also want you to know that our teacher contracts, which some teachers are wondering about in terms of what will that look like, all of those things at this time are moving towards paperless, which is something that was in our strategic plan as you all may remember several years ago. And so we've gone paperless in many ways and this just allows us to continue to do that. Going to conclude on the staffing piece and go straight to the plan. Uh, transportation is listed in here, but it's also listed in our plan, so we're going to go straight to the document that you actually have, uh, and then go through that section by section, uh, if that is, uh, acceptable. And as we stop at each section, we will, uh, answer questions. I will not be the only one talking because you will get bored of hearing me for that long, uh, period of a time. But as we get to the sections, Mrs. Risley, who is our improvement specialist, uh, many of you know Dr. McDonald, our other improvement specialist, I call him our data dude, well, she's our data diva. She is here this evening and she is ready to answer questions as well. Uh, so when you hear another voice jump in, Ms. Risley will be talking through much of the plan because she did much of the typing on the plan, uh, and also the research behind what other districts are doing in models. She was part of the team of individuals that did that, but she certainly has in an ongoing way kept up with that. Our plan, transforming Topeka together, as we jump on into the table of contents, when you see this plan online, we want you to know that it has the timeline that our board members saw last, uh, board meeting, that it tells you all the things that we've done since March. The table of contents is hyperlinked. We thank Ms. Risley and Ms. Stella Cruz in teaching and learning for hyperlinking all those pieces so you don't have to scroll down. Just click on what you want to read and it'll take you to that. And so with those sections, uh, as we prepare to go through the various sections, for the purpose of this, we, um, are going to, I believe, purpose of this, we are going to, I believe, slide right on down just for the purpose of the public to know page by page, really, so go through the section so you know what's coming next. In terms of our plan overall, and we're going to have to make this print much larger for all of us to be able to see. I'll start off with just our strategies, and then Ms. Ristley and I are going to tag team a little bit here with this plan. Overall, our strategies as we prepare to get started, really, we are really looking at the Kansas State guidance. And so for those that wonder, why are we just now talking about our plan? We really needed to wait for KSDE to release their plan, which they just did on Tuesday, I'm sorry, on Wednesday. And today is Thursday, so we've been able to work all summer, make sure that this plan is aligned with their plan. And the reopening pieces that we have in, we are pleased they are quite well-aligned. And moving from there, we also have looked as well at our goals and strategies under equity. The district and each school will also establish a reopening plan stakeholder group. That group really is a reopening plan team. That particular team will be individuals from the school, which might include their nurse, administration, and other individuals in their building that will use this guidance document and use our plan to implement it at their individual school. Depending on the size of your school, the number of doors that you have, for example, a Topeka High versus a Topeka West, how you implement this will look different. So we have asked, I have asked every school to have their own teams in place. If you want to know how do you get involved in that team, you would contact your principal and let them know of your interests. Again, they'll be keeping those teams small, but those teams will be key people that will help determine some items within those building. Point number five really talks about the Kansas standards, pre-K through 12 being taught in all content areas as outlined by KSDE. And point number six says that Topeka Public Schools will comply in all of the areas of regulatory matters related to special education. With that, Ms. Ristley, do you want to talk about the template and format of our plan? And then I'll pick it back up from there. In terms of walking us through this piece, do we have a second microphone for up here? Because we will just switch on off. Ms. Ristley, I'll hand it off to you and put back on my mask, and then we'll come back up back and forth. She's going to talk about the outline of our plan, talk us through the first several sections, and then we'll pick up from there and stop and answer questions. Ms. Ristley?
Thank you. So to start us off, we did research, we did research looking at both local and, sorry, we did research looking at both local and looking at also national plans that were in place too for different states. To do that, we did list some of the research that we found in here. We also have links in the plan to different CDC guidelines. We've also, there is a link to the Navigating Change Guidelines by KSDE as well. Additionally, we also have piece, we have started out with a piece on our equity. We have the research first. We move into educational equity there and just our statement about how equity is really incorporated in everything we do at Topeka Public Schools. And then we move into our communications area. In the communications area, we really go in depth, and actually, you should probably start going through this. So if we go down to the communications area. So this is the research component. This is the educational equity, and then communication, if we can stop here. So you'll see that one thing that's really critical is that we do communicate in a variety of ways. As such, we have listed those different options here just to make sure they're really accessible to everybody. And as Dr. Anderson mentioned, we do have a reopening team at each school that will also be seeking ways to communicate from each school as well. Additionally, we are really committed to our communication being frequent and as often as possible during this time. The next section is related to human resources. So for the human resources section, it actually talks about how we are moving to a, we are moving to more of a virtual environment and trying to have human resources, trying to have our human resources processes be automated so that people are able to not actually have to come into the building. We are also doing a virtual orientation for our new staff, and so we're really excited about that. We have a lot of really great opportunities set up for them as well.
At this time, now that we've talked a little bit about communications and human resources and just the first sections of the plan, this just gives you structure. As we go a little bit deeper, communications will have listed some of the items that they're doing. I know that Dr. Gray is on the line with us, and so I'll ask Dr. Gray to mention the upcoming event that will be having to debrief about this plan, but also the areas of communication that we have and or will continue to do moving forward. Dr. Gray, under Communications and that section in the plan, can you speak a little bit about that area, sir?
Yes, Dr. Anderson. Yes, in terms of communications, I know one of the things that we have planned on tomorrow after the meeting with, tonight with reopening plan, we plan to debrief with DCAC. It's called the Superintendent's Debriefing, and we're going to just debrief about the plan tonight. Again, there are going to be several questions that will be asked, and we will share response based on our plan. As was shared with Ms. Ristley, we have several methods, vehicles by which we are communicating. Again, one of the things we really wanted to focus on was not only making sure that those who had internet access were able to receive the plan, but also making sure that our plan took into account those who may not have access to internet resources. So again, as you see in the plan, we have ways by which we could communicate with our other families, such as food sites and other vehicles that we plan to use as we move forward.
So with those pieces, we're going to stop before we move forward with communications and answer any questions. We have started a Spanish Twitter line. We previously had a Spanish Facebook. And with those two pieces continuing to go, a change that we made in the last week, thanks to a recommendation from a board member, was regarding placing our current Spanish items, not just on the Spanish Facebook, but on the English Facebook. So teachers are now forwarding those to families. Thank you for that suggestion. And the Twitter is actually a new piece that we're continuing. All of the videos that we have, now that administrators are back and our staff members are returning as it relates to preparations for next year, we will be removing, going back to the voiceover, our Spanish voiceover videos. So if you're not someone that's inclined to read items online, but you would like to see the videos that are either on cable or on our social media, we certainly will be continuing to do that. So those are some of the ways that we're reaching some of our other families. And then, of course, tomorrow, DCAC, we will be having a DCAC debrief with the superintendent to talk a little bit about components of the plan. Are there comments about communication at this time before we continue to proceed on to the other components of this document? Hearing no question. We talked briefly about human resources in the slide, and we touched briefly on human resources in this piece. Are there any questions regarding human resources right now before we proceed on? Eventually, we're going to ask at the end for questions once you hit the schedule and the plan overall. There are no process questions for Ms. Randberg or Mr. Robbins. Then I'll turn it back over to Mrs. Ristley momentarily, Dr. Bonebreak.
What happens? Teachers really, there's an immunocompromised child at home, something like that, big leave, I read somewhere, trying to, um...
So our plan doesn't have any comments about resigning or losing jobs, but it does speak a little bit about staffing and how we might support them. And for those that didn't hear the question, the question was, what if a person has an immunocompromised family member or themselves, and what do they do? Ms. Cope, would you like to start and answer that question? As Ms. Cope, our school board attorney, has worked closely with Ms. Randberg, our human resource general director. And if Ms. Randberg or Mr. Robbins feel more needs to be added, we'll turn it over to them. Ms. Cope, do you want to start that question off? What happens for staff who might have a health issue who cannot return?
Absolutely. So I think the first thing to start out with for staff and also the board member to understand is that these are going to have to be individual determinations made between the employee and human resources. So the first thing that we would recommend to any staff member who has concerns regarding their own health condition or that of a family member, that they should contact human resources directly because we can't make blanket decisions for everyone. It's going to be individual for each person. Just in general, though, getting more general from that, Congress did pass the Families' First Corona Virus Response Act, the FF-CRA, which made changes to the Family Medical Leave Act in two different ways. That is in effect until December, the end of December of this year. Essentially, that allows each staff member two weeks of paid leave for certain situations that arise due to COVID. So that would be two weeks that would be paid. After that, it would shift to FMLA that we deal with all the time with staff members. And then also, it could go into then ADA accommodations and that sort of thing. So again, our recommendation would be to work through human resources, get the information that they request, and we will be working with individual employees as those situations
Now we are ready to talk about instruction. So it really is handled on a case by case. There is a law that supports those staff members, and Mrs. Randberg, the General Director of Human Resources, will actually be sending correspondence to all staff. We believe on Friday that she has developed with Ms. Cope inviting individuals to share if they believe they have issues that impact them or their family members that would prevent them from fully coming back, and then talking through those one-on-one as opposed to waiting to later for those to come up just naturally. So we encourage our teachers to do that. Ms. Ristley and I are going to trade off just a little bit to go into instruction and turn it over to answer questions from Ms. Wallace, but this is where the phases of the plan go into play. I do want to mention, we are on page 17 for our board members. And for those that are looking online, it is on the screen. We're going to make that screen just a little bit larger so you can fully see it. We do want to share that this is a living document, and because it is living, all living things will grow and change. So as we have the Health Department guidance, as we look at our staffing, if we don't have adequate staffing to support the needs that we have, or as we look at just guidelines that may change, this plan may change. So we will be asking the board to support the plan as it is now, but administration's ability to change and adjust the plan if needed. That being said, Mrs. Ristley, do you want to start off, and then we'll jump in and then begin to answer questions?
Sure. So to start us off, basically, we, using the KSDE guidance and also looking at models from other states, we ended up determining multiple options for scheduling. The first option would obviously be the remote, the first option, well, our preferred option, of course, would be traditional in-person, five days per week instruction onsite is what it's called. However, given that there, however, given the spread of COVID, we also know that we need to have other options in place. Another option would be 100% remote learning if there was substantial spread. To that extent, we have, if there was substantial spread, and to that extent, students would be learning 100% of the time online, they would be meeting our instructional time guidelines, and they would be meeting, they would be meeting the Kansas standards of 1,116 hours per year of instruction. Additionally, the third option would be a hybrid model. A hybrid model would encompass a combination of in-person and also virtual learning. So for a hybrid model, students would be in class two days per week, and they would also be able to zoom in, as Dr. Anderson mentioned earlier, the other three days per week as well. We have, we are suggesting a phased-in model. For the phased-in model, we would begin right after Labor Day in order to, and in this, in this model, we'd begin right after Labor Day in a remote learning environment. So to that extent, we would be able to really use that first, be able to be, really able to use those first few days to teach students new procedures, to teach them about how to, how to deal with COVID in the school building. So what does social distancing look like? What does it look like, the entrance and exit procedures? What are proper hand washing procedures for our youngest students? Just all of those details that we could really do in that remote environment for the first few days. Additionally, that would also give us the opportunity, that would also give us the opportunity to really have our, to do social, social emotional learning with students and really do check-ins with each student individually. And so that was another benefit we saw to that as well. Depending on KSDE guidance and Health Department guidance, we would then move to a, we would then move into a staggered approach model. So for the staggered approach, we would start off by having students in kindergarten, grade six and grades nine, begin following the hybrid model once it's safe to do so. So that means that students in those grades would come into the school building for two days per week, and they would also, they would also participate virtually for the other three days per week. So that would be our Phase Two model that's listed at the top of the screen at this time. And the reason, and for those grades, we know that kindergarten, grade six and grade nine are all transition grades. So that means it's they're entering middle school, they're entering elementary school, they're entering high school. So we thought it was really important for them to be able to have that time to really get to know their teachers, really get to know the school building, really start feeling comfortable. And then with, again, following guidance, because all we really, of course, safety is the main concern, then we would move into the Phase Three model. For Phase Three, all students would begin following the hybrid rotation schedule. So we would end up having, so like I said, we would have students come to school two days per week. We would try to make sure, and actually it's our primary goal of ours, that siblings would be able to be in the same group. So to that extent, that means that siblings would be able to attend school in person on the same days, and then they would be able to be remote on the same days. And we think that breakfast and lunch would still be served every day, and we would, this would really provide us with consistency. Additionally, we'd still be able to provide special education and English language learner supports, which is obviously one of our most critical priorities. Additionally, we would have, we would take attendance just like normal, do grades just like normal, whether students are in person or whether they're learning remotely that day.
So does that mean that half of the students would attend Monday, Wednesday, the other half would attend Tuesday, Thursday?
That's a great question. So we would actually have it where students, Group A would attend Monday, Tuesday. We would do deep cleaning on Wednesdays, and then Group Two would attend Thursday, Friday, and we'd be able to do that way, we were really minimizing exposure, and we're also really trying to keep stable groups, which is mentioned in the KSDE document as well.
So we're going to go back to those phases and begin to answer questions. Let me share a couple of things with you. What we know is that our, we believe that at this time, rushing to failure with having all of the students at one time would not only be dangerous, but would be quite complicated. And I will tell you that because of the bus restrictions and the restrictions on the size of a student that can be in one classroom, all of our students cannot come back at the same time. So the restrictions of six feet apart, the restrictions on the school bus at this time is far less than what we previously had, which can be as small as one student per seat unless they're siblings. That automatically prevents all of the students from returning. Therefore, the hybrid model is the option that we have, but that does not remove us from still honoring the voices of our staff and our parents, who would also like to see a 100% remote option, and who would also... a 100% remote option, and who would also like to see an in-school option. We do have some families and some teachers as well who automatically are in classrooms with less than 15 students. That might be special education rooms. We have several alternative schools that already have small class sizes. We also have preschools that we are looking at capping the number. And right now, we do not have students on the waiting list. Therefore, we can really explore maintaining small group class sizes with students who could come on a daily basis, and we are looking at honoring that model where it does apply. And that will reduce the transition between different groups of students. Outside of those groups that I've just outlined, the phased-in approach now will allow us to, one, honor the voices that we've heard, but also carefully transition in. So Phase One is fully remote. So the lessons include the social-emotional lessons, much of which is in the appendix in our document, at least the system that we're using is in the appendix. But the social-emotional lessons, our staff members have already collected information on mental health through our registration form because we have three questions on there as we did last year. So groups can now be created. Washing hands, wearing your mask, how to enter the building, the fact that you now have signs on the floor, what lunch looks like. There is a whole list of things that students will have to be reintroduced to, and we will be prepared to reintroduce those students during the time they're in Phase One. We want to make sure that while we would like to be in Phase One for a period of time of approximately five to seven days, if the health concerns are significant in regards to the crisis continuing to rise and the numbers impacting our schools, and if we do not have full agreement with the Health Department that it is wise to move into the next phase, we will not move into the next phase. We are honoring very much the encouragement and guidance from our Health Department. While they cannot make the decision for us, they certainly can give us great guidance, and we want to listen to those experts. So Phase One, ideally, we'd like to stay in that phase for a five-to-seven-day period. However, we are prepared to stay in that phase for longer if that is a need. We want to make sure we stress that piece, and that's the way that it is reflected in the plan. Phase Two, however, it allows us to dip our toe in the water. And dipping the toe in the water means that we get a chance with each grade level, each school level, so elementary, middle, and high, will have a grade within their building or two that we can test out and make sure that our bus system works as properly as we needed it to, our water system, our new way of entering schools. And with a smaller number of students who also are transitioning for the first time in that building, have full opportunity without anyone else in the building to really get to know their school. That's the intent of Phase Two. And while we are doing that, we do want you to know, all of these phases, we're going to make sure that we still continue to properly accommodate any student that's going to Washburn Tech or to our colleges and universities in the manner that they need to be accommodated. So we have some students that are taking classes at Washburn Tech, and in our plan, it shows that we're going to be supporting their school in the manner they determine. So that is the exception to these three phases. I want to stop there and begin to answer questions on those three phases. And Ms. Wallace, Dr. Hackett, and any of the team members, Mrs. Rissy and others, can tag-team in answering these questions. I'll start with Dr. Morrison.
I did notice that assessments were going to be Scantron. I assume that, of course, elementary. But it became obvious to me, listening to parents when they were on the Zoom meetings, that some of the kids had really good instruction, and some of the kids seemed not to have good instruction. So I assume at the beginning of the year, you'll need to do assessments to see where all these kids are.
Deatron is actually elementary through high school. And so with that, we want to really look at what the gaps have been for students. Again, it's one of the reasons why Phase One can be quite helpful in helping have that as one assessment instrument. With that assessment instrument, we're not fully rushing into testing students as much as we are building relationships and handling the mental health and the safety pieces. But we will tell you that since we already have Scantron and it's online and Mastery Connect, those tools will, will be utilized to help assess what's been the gap since last March to now. And based on those gaps, it will help teachers further tailor instruction. I will tell you as well that the teaching team, Teaching and Learning Team, and several of the teachers are on this COVID team, so they really are looking at the competencies that came out yesterday from KSDE. And those competencies will be used to make sure that we have the proper level of assessments, especially for kids that are in early primary grades, really look at learning, because they would not be taking Scantron, our kindergarten, our first-grade students, and often our second-grade students aren't taking that. So they are looking at and determining the best assessment for those students that will be guided on that. Other questions about the phases? Dr. Mickelson?
Is there any indication the state will waive the 100, or 1,116-hour requirement? Or is that, they're sticking to their guns and that's the expectation?
Ms. Wallace? And can you repeat the question to make sure those online heard it loudly and speak really closely into the mic?
Yes. So the question is, is the state willing to waive the 1,116 hours that is required? The answer to that is, that is a law. And right now, any waiver of that would have to come through the legislature, and we are not anticipating that.
Ms. Foley? Aaron, I've decided I want to put my child on remote for the rest of the year, and I enroll that way. As the year goes on, I might feel more comfortable about my student entering school. May I change my choices? Or I might feel less comfortable. May I change that after enrollment and the school year become more real to us as a parent and a student?
Yes. Within the plan, we are recommending that a student stays within a certain plan within, for one quarter. And then at the end of that quarter, which gives approximately six weeks or so, within the end of that quarter, six to eight weeks, students can then transition into a different model if they so choose to. So if you're a parent that would like to enroll right now in remote learning for the whole year, you may do that. And we have over 800 parents that have chosen to enroll in a remote model plan at this time, and we may perhaps have more, but right now, 800, over 800. Those families at the end of first quarter might see a decline in the virus and feel really comfortable with returning second quarter. Second quarter generally starts right around October, mid-October or so. And so with that, they can then choose to transition that time. Ms. Stewart Campbell?
So, transitioning from Phase One to Phase Two, we're saying, once it's safe to do so, do we know what that criteria might be? Like, might it be two full weeks of no new cases? Or we just listen to the Department of, to the, to our Health Department?
Well, there are two pieces. One of the items in that very first PowerPoint that I showed kind of, when things are red, what it looks like, and when it's yellow, what it looks like, and that helps determine some of that movement. But we are fortunate in that we have the opportunity, due to the generosity of time from the Health Department, to meet with them every week. And in fact, this week, it'll be twice this week, but it's every week. So each week, we will have an opportunity to check with Dr. Pizzino on the status of the spread and the feeling of safety overall. I'll give you one example. We originally were planning to have our graduation ceremony next Saturday. We have been planning and setting up for quite some time. And the meeting that we had this week with the Health Department, there was strong encouragement, although they cannot decide for us, not to have large group gatherings of any kind for back-to-school or before school starts at this point. So because of that, as typical as that decision is, fortunately, we had a virtual graduation ceremony already, and we have things that we can certainly give still to our students in the mail. We made this decision mainly based on that communication with the Health Department, which was both verbal and in writing. And so for us, for Topeka Public Schools, so we will be relying a great deal on our health experts in transitioning the phases. We also will look at our data. And then the other pieces are staffing, to make sure that this virus has not had such an adverse impact on staffing, that we are limited with the amount of staff that we have to students. Want to make sure that when our students come back, particularly with the social requirements, that we can serve students in that class with the number that we are limited to, with the staff that we have available. If that is a concern, then that may as well cause us to really look at the phases. So Health Department, staffing, those are two key pieces. Does that answer your question, Ms. Stewart Campbell? Again, our hope is a five-to-seven-day window to really look at stability. And if over the course of a week, we see decline or stable movement as it relates to the virus, we certainly will ask the Health Department, how safe is it to return to school? And if they feel that the conditions are safe enough to fully reengage, while they have not asked us not to engage, if they feel that the community spread has declined or stabilized, then we will take that into account in going into our next phase.
Okay. Thank you. So it's possible we stay in Phase One? We don't know. Until the Health Department and our health experts advise us that it's safe.
I am asking for the board to give us grace in that we may stay in Phase One longer than five to seven days, but we would hope that that five-to-seven-day window would be a desire. And over that time, because that's the amount of time, we really want to make sure we have adequate lessons in all of those pieces. It's also the amount of time that we can look at the virus spread. But it is possible that the spread continues to climb in a manner that it's unsafe for our students to return. And if the Health Department shares that it's unsafe in this community at that time, then we would ask for the board's grace in allowing us to stay potentially in that phase for longer period of time. But the health of our students will be the priority in making that decision.
Dr. Anderson, I have a couple of questions. If teachers are teaching virtually, where will they be, where will they be located?
And the question is, if teachers are teaching virtually, where will they be located? Mr. Robbins, our Deputy Superintendent, is on the line, and he oversees personnel. So let me ask our team member to chime on in on the personnel piece. I will tell you, in addition to what he shares, some of our teachers who may be teaching remotely may have some unique situations that I'll speak to after he speaks in general. Mr. Robbins, can you talk about personnel and, and when teachers are teaching, whether they're remote or in person, what does personnel expect, and what will be the communication from Ms. Ramberg? Or Ms. Ramberg? Mr. Robbins?
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Well, in answer to that question, you know, they could be teaching either from their classrooms in their school building, or the remote teaching could be coming from their homes. It just depends. We have heard a desire to have both situations available. We know that there are some teachers that would be more comfortable not being in a building or in their classroom. And there are others who would be much more comfortable being in their classroom where they have more material and more of the tools that they need to deliver a quality lesson available to them. So you could have either situation, but a lot will depend on the class that they're teaching, and a lot will depend on the needs of the students, and also in conjunction with what the desires are of the school administration.
I could certainly, if we want to be in the classroom, Phase Three, when you're an A/B schedule, and if a teacher is still teaching remotely and at a health risk to be there, then maybe they separate themselves from the masses of the school. So that makes sense to me. The second question I have is, what is our plan? Let's say we cruise along, we're doing well as a community, as a county, as a state, we hit a blip, and our new case rate rises. What is our plan then?
So one of the items that we have, which is why we said this is a living document, teaching our community what Phase One is, that Phase One is a remote phase. Phase Two is a hybrid model phase. And Phase Three includes all of our students, and I'm sorry, Phase Two is phasing in our hybrid model, our A/B schedule. And of course, moving into Phase Three are all of our students being able to return again on that hybrid model. We're asking our families to understand that if, in fact, the COVID numbers rise in a manner that impacts adversity, our school and our students, and we're having to quarantine classrooms or schools in a fashion that we feel is unsafe, then we would like for all to be prepared that Phase One could be a phase that we have to return to, just as it is in many cities across this nation. 14,000 students is a small city, and, and larger than some rural areas actually in Kansas. And so we will cautiously and carefully move out of the phases, which is why we really want to rely on the Health Department. So we hope that when we move out, we don't have to go backwards. Why, we might stay a little longer in a phase to make sure that it's safe to move out of that phase. I will share with you, if a teacher is teaching in a classroom and has students zooming in remotely, and then we'll see students on another period of time, and that teacher is the main teacher for that student, most of those teachers will be in our building, socially distanced in that fashion, but they will be in the building. So we want to make sure that whether they are remote teaching or teaching in person, since the majority of those teachers will be in the building, that if, in fact, there is concern about spread in any building, that we're prepared to transition. We have had a great deal of conversation about quarantine and what that looks like and COVID tracing, which is also, a bit of that is in the plan in regards to next steps for health reasons. So with the quarantining rules, I think that currently, as it stands from the CDC or the Kansas Health Department, it has a window of time that's approximately two weeks in which a person could be quarantined if, in fact, they had direct exposure as determined by the Health Department. If an individual or multiple in one school are quarantined due to being exposed or having COVID, then that could impact the phase for that particular building or classroom for a period of time. So you want to be prepared for that. It is possible that the whole district is in session and things are looking well for Topeka Public Schools, but it's possible that there could be a cluster in one classroom or one school. If that were to happen, that one school or classroom would be addressed in the appropriate fashion. That is possible. So we really are trying to think of all the possibilities, which is why all of the options certainly are available. We're also encouraging individuals who would like to start off remotely and commit to that, really for the experience, just to start off with and to stay in for a quarter. We are encouraging for that to be exercised in a thoughtful manner so that we can ensure we know how many people first quarter might want to stay in that phase. That will help us as well with our staffing and staffing needs related to who wants to be 100% remote. We do have a virtual coordinator at this time. One person is handling the secondary, and another person is working with the elementary because we have approximately 400 students at the elementary that signed up for 100% remote and approximately 400 at the secondary level that are 100% remote at this time based on enrollment. Approximately 8,000 students have enrolled at this time out of our 13,500 students. So as we continue to have enrollment going on over the course of this month, we'll get a better feel of how many families want 100% remote. we'll get a better feel of how many families want a hundred percent remote. If a family signed up for a hundred percent remote, upon approving the plan, we will have the virtual coordinators make a personal phone call to each of those family members at this time to make sure they understand what remote is. I'm going to ask Ms. Wallace to define what remote education is. So for the purpose of this evening, we all understand that terminology. I ask her to do that because the other term is virtual school. And we've had some families ask specifically for virtual school, which is something different. As we continue with our scheduling conversation, I'll turn it over to Ms. Wallace to explain both remote and virtual.
Remote learning, students are synchronously or zooming into their classroom as instruction is happening. And by state definition, they are expected to participate in the same number of minutes of learning and instruction on a daily basis that the students who are in school are participating in, as well as having contact with their teacher or the school daily. So those are requirements of remote learning. Virtual learning is enrolling in our virtual school and utilizing, it's more self-paced. You're not zooming into a classroom. It's not tied to a given school. There isn't necessarily that sense of class or community. So they're very different things.
So just for clarification, thank you for that distinction because I didn't realize the differences. When you say you have 800 parents who've enrolled their children for virtual or remote school? I guess it's virtual, isn't it?
Actually, no, especially for elementary. Elementary, many of them are remote. But I'm going to ask Mr. Kip, you know, it takes a team to make this happen, which is why I'm bringing all those voices in who've been doing this hard work with us and for us. Mr. Kip on the line? The question was, out of the approximate 800 students that signed up, did they sign up for virtual or remote? Dr. Mickelson, that is why every family is going to get a phone call to make sure that they signed up for what they think they signed up for. And that explanation will be reviewed so that we place them in the right system. Mr. Kip?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Anderson. In looking at the data of those 800 remote or virtual learners, it's approximately half of them, about 400 that are leaning towards the hundred percent remote versus the actual virtual platform. Now, like Dr. Anderson mentioned, our virtual school coordinator is following up with those parents to make sure that they understand the distinction and provide any clarity or questions that they have.
And so mostly secondary, Mr. Kip, is that correct? Would like to have virtual only? Some of these are students with only one class to graduate or some of these students are just, they prefer the online for flexibility. But primarily, am I correct in saying that that's primarily secondary? And then those that signed up for remote are primarily elementary and some middle that signed up for remote, is that correct?
Correct. Generally speaking, virtual is going to be the higher secondary levels.
This question may get in the weeds a little bit. Let's say we have a teacher who is positive at a high school. And I assume the students are still going to rotate through classes? Or are they going to stay stationary and teachers move?
At this time, I'll start off, and if Dr. Hackett wants to add to what I share, I will turn it over to her. Dr. Hackett, the associate superintendent, oversees our secondary schools. At this time, in our plan, we have the recommendation that KSTE has provided that where possible, students remain in place where possible. And we have stable groups and staff come to students as opposed to students from all over going to staff. That's one of the items I do want to mention. Now, in a high school, they have worked on a schedule to help reduce movement. And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Hackett to talk a little bit about that.
Yes, I'd like to commend our high school leadership team and the work they've been doing this week with regard to a schedule. We know from the advice that we've received, the fewer interactions the students have to make, the fewer transitions they have to make, the safer their day will be. So we've gone from what would have been actually an eight-period day, seven hours with one advisor face, down to four, four classrooms. So that we've cut it in half virtually. They will, those students will be able to go to school on, as we mentioned before, all families, elementary, middle and high. We'll have all of them together on Monday and Tuesday, group A. And then group B will be on Thursday and Friday, cutting down the number of transitions. I did ask the high school and the middle school principals, do you feel like it's possible that students could stay put and teachers rotate? And they just felt like with the complexity of a high school schedule, some would be going to chemistry, some would be going to physics, some would be going to whatever it may be. They just did not seem to think that would work. But we have talked about this and tomorrow we'll have a two-hour training on logistics. And I spoke with all of the secondary administrators today. Much like Dr. Anderson has said, they will have a team within each of their buildings. And the responsibility of that team is to think about traffic patterns. What direction do we want the traffic to flow in the building? How can we exclude students from passing each other if at all possible? So I think we have done what we can to reduce the number of transitions that students would experience in the course of the day.
So what will our response be if we have a teacher who's teaching English at one of the high schools who attracts COVID? Been exposed to four or five different days of teaching until they become symptomatic and get tested? Are all those kids quarantined or are they? What is our strategy there?
Like you were a fly on the wall with the health department this week. That was almost the exact scenario I gave the health department. And now, one of the things that's important to know is that, you know, the health department has shared there, they also are navigating this really case by case. And they have had situations where a person on a athletic team, for example, may be COVID positive or a person in a group at an employment agency might be COVID positive. And it doesn't necessarily mean everybody that's been around them is potentially positive or the direct contact is such that they all need to be quarantined. But that is a health department decision. So for us, our role is to report it to the health departments and they will be giving us guidance in that regard. We also will be informing our families at that time that that teacher may have been exposed to of that particular positive. Or if there's a student that's positive and the teacher or another student is exposed to that person, we keep informing all involved that an individual was positive and that the health department has been notified and that the health department will be contacting them and doing the COVID tracing to move from there. What we have agreed to, however, is within our own buildings and our teams, we will have an individual who would investigate, as they normally would if someone were sick, investigate the number of people, individuals that they contacted within the building. One of the reasons why we're reducing the amount of movement. The schedule that the principals came up with helps that tremendously. And it would be for elementary, middle and high. So that, again, the Monday, Tuesday keeps the cohort together. And the seating that we will address as well helps minimize the amount of movement between classrooms and between students. And then the Wednesday deep cleaning allows us to really minimize and know who was sitting where. Within our plan, and right here in this building, we have a makeshift classroom for our board members to see. So right behind the door where Dr. Mickelson is, there's a makeshift classroom set up for you to take a look at. It has the, many of the various components of safety features that we have in place, which include, we have shields around each one of the desks. Each desk is socially distanced apart or table by six feet. If it's a table, it's a student sitting on one end and a student sitting on another end. And with that social distance desk, in between every desk, if their desk's being used, there is a desk in between them. So that we know there's not really a crossing between the two individuals because of the desk in between them. Each student will be assigned seating, which you don't generally see in high school and in middle school necessarily. But you will seat in this phase, which again is why the virtual phase one is important to explain that and why it's important. So that student can have the same desk, put their items in it and know that that's going to be their constant seat throughout. Again, Mr. Robbins has done a tremendous job in helping revamp what schools look like and in setting that up. When we get to facilities in the plan and we move off of schedule, Mr. Robbins is going to talk a little bit about that and transportation. Other questions about the schedule?
A little bit. You've alluded to the fact that, of course, choir and vocal music and probably instrumental music is going to go by the wayside, especially phase one. So my question, and I see it here, it's returned to intercollegiate athletics, is, I mean, people are going to ask football, soccer, et cetera. That's gone away through phase one?
And so there are two pieces. Can you read what our fine arts statement does say? I think you're on the page of where it is right now, at least on this side. So our fine arts statement, it actually doesn't say that it's going by the wayside. To really read directly from that document, Ms. Risley, I'll turn it over to you on what it says about fine arts. And with our outstanding fine arts team, we believe that our fine arts team can come together and look at plans of in-school and remote and can create a plan that keeps in mind the safety guidelines, but also allows for parents to sign up as they would with athletics, knowing that we're in this pandemic space and determine if they'd like to participate. Mrs. Risley?
Nineteen, under fine arts, the document reads, "Topeka Public Schools is committed to offering a robust offering of fine arts opportunities for students. Given that COVID-19 can be spread via singing and playing woodwind or brass instruments, appropriate accommodations will be made to ensure the safety of all students."
So we remain committed to the arts. We want students to still be able to sign up for the fine arts. What that looks like, we believe our teachers will be able to develop a robust plan that our health department can give us some guidance on. We know that some instruments, woodwind and singing, would be a challenge during the stage that we're in now. But we also know that there are many fine arts activities and things that can be done in person beyond that that we believe our staff members should be able to do. As they do those plans, we'll make sure to post those and be able to share those.
And athletics, I mean, we're going to get questions about athletics.
Right now, and the plan talks about KESHA really being the guide for athletics. And so as KESHA guides that piece, we do know that KESHA has met and looked at some athletic opportunities being optional for the summer, we know that. But KESHA really guides the athletic program and we'll continue to follow their guide. And that's our recommendation at the time.
Is Wednesday a lost day?
Wednesday is a remote learning day, and I'm glad that you asked that. So students would be learning every day. And so again, when 50% are at home and 50% are in the school, we certainly have students still learning remotely. The Wednesday day, the deep cleaning day, is the opportunity again for remote learning to continue. So there's never a time in which learning is not going to be occurring throughout the week. However, some will happen remotely and/or in small group. I do want to say that Wednesday still will have the opportunity for small group. Our mental health appointments can still happen. But we will be asking our custodial staff to deep clean weekly and mid-week to do that. So that when the second group comes, we know that it's less likely that there are issues or there's a continued spread of the virus. That recommendation in part is just looking at the guidance documents of the deep cleaning to happen when the kids come and go. So keeping them in a cohort allows for that in an even deeper way, what you would do with the end of the spread.
Thank you. And since school is starting three weeks late, will it end three weeks later?
Our teachers' union, right now, they're looking at a schedule of what that could be for those 18 student contact days. We do know that those 18 student contact days will occur this school year. And so what that looks like, however, we've asked for our teacher voice to give input as they normally do in our calendar. And that will help drive us in looking at proposals that we feel would be acceptable collaboratively. So we'll be able to give more information to all of that yesterday evening, certainly after next quarter.
I'm concerned about testing students' knowledge with this remote and virtual learning. On the news last night, there was a middle schooler that said, oh, she'll sit there, but she hates it and she's not going to. I don't know how widespread that might be, but it's a little disconcerting and I'm afraid we're going to lose students and they're going to fall far behind.
So our assessments, and if Ms. Wallace or Dr. Hackett would like to join in for free, certainly can happen when kids are in school. You know, assessments don't have to happen virtually. It could be on an in-school day that those assessments. The other piece is that you can't find is it only assessment? Teachers are making assessments based on, particularly if you're below second grade. But teachers in all grades are making assessments that are common formative assessments. You know, they can create an assessment as a theme and do a checkpoint of where kids left off at or even weekly. So that doesn't have to be virtual and may very well not be virtual in regards to assessment. Again, we're going to allow for our teachers and our instructional experts to really look at how we're going to craft that. And we believe that our teachers will be able to do that well. Every school in Topeka Public Schools has at least one coach and some have more than that. But that one coach will be helping coach this process well with what assessments can look like. I'm glad you mentioned that. Ms. Wallace or Dr. Hackett, do you want to add to that statement?
I would add that part of the requirements from KSTE on remote learning include that students are required to be instructed and assessed on the same standards as in-school learning. So we will be teaching to the standards and assessing formatively and formally student mastery of those standards. And that can be done onsite or it can be done remotely. Teachers have an amazing way of motivating kids to be more participative and engaged in those processes. So for those learners, it would make more sense for them to take it onsite.
Anderson, I might also add, I think the conversation we had today was really enlightening and very uplifting. And the principals were very motivated. They feel like their teachers are very motivated. Last year, we were all surprised. Our state, our country, the world was surprised by what happened last spring. Now we've had time to reflect, time to prepare and time to think. And honestly, many, our teachers and our students want to come back to the learning process. And I think about some of the PD that's being planned and some of the PD professional development that has taken place over the course of the spring. I think we're more knowledgeable about how to create lessons that are engaging and project-based and ways in which, and I also think it's going to be very beneficial to our students to know that even though 50% are in the classroom, while the other 50% are at home, they still are connected through Zoom. And so everyone is receiving instruction. It's just part of it's going to be onsite and others will be at home. But then they'll swap and trade out.
So I'm assuming our remote learning is going to look different than we did in the spring when we had to put it together so quickly. And sitting in on the parent virtual meetings, they were concerned about, we had to do this for a long time, the quality of that remote learning. So what has changed and what can parents and students who choose, feel like they didn't do well in the spring, how does that look different for them this year?
As limited accountability in the spring, we didn't take grades. Students' grades could drop below their third quarter grades. That's not true moving into the new year. We also, for a lot of the learning, it was one hour of office time where they made contact with students. Some of those Zooms were an hour, some were in small groups or 10 or 15 minutes, some were phone calls. So it will look very different when students are synchronously zooming into class and engaged in the same number of minutes of instruction during a day that they are if they're in school. they're in school. Also, I believe students and teachers felt really isolated in the spring, and now we're bringing them back into, you know, half of the kids are in the classroom and the others are zooming in. So there's still that feel of community and classroom that will keep kids engaged and coming, as well as that accountability piece.
One of the things I want to remind everyone is that every school will have their own team, and that team will then help bring this plan into their building in a way that makes no sense for that building. We are committed to band and we're committed to orchestra, and we want our fine arts teachers to particularly know that, because we'll be working with our fine arts teachers and our, Mr. Reynolds, who is also a teacher at Highland Park, and he is the coordinator of fine arts, he will be working with his team to look at, what does fine arts look like during a pandemic, knowing that this district stays committed to that? So we chose not to eliminate band and fine arts, it just will look different. And as things change, we will be able to stay with it and hopefully move back to something that is more like what we're used to. I share that as we want our band and our orchestra teachers to know that. We do know that some individuals may wonder, on Wednesday, when we're doing deep cleaning, will staff be in the building? And so, you know, that's one of those items that we will share, that, you know, we had some teachers say that, you know what, I'm a science teacher, I need to be in my building to get ready for my next group. So again, that school team will have an opportunity to look at what their building begins to look like, and that planning will begin with principals tomorrow. They have a large time being spent together with Ms. Wallace, Dr. Hackett, and I, and Chief Brown will do some tabletop exercises first of practicing if someone has COVID, what do you do? If a parent comes in and doesn't want to wear a mask, what does that look like? Because masks are required. It also will entail the nurse talking about the facts versus the myths about COVID-19. And we also will be sharing where testing in our district, which is a unique opportunity that we'll be able to provide, will be occurring. University of Kansas at Topeka High, through our Topeka High Clinic graciously agreed to provide COVID-19 testing for those that would like testing. When the school year opens, we won't be having individuals from outside of Topeka High coming in thinking they're positive and coming to get tested, but anyone at that school and those students, should there be symptoms, we have the ability to test on-site. So they did acquire those resources upon request and their agreement at the end of last week, and they're ready as of this week to begin to move forward with getting started with that level of testing. And so as we move forward, our goal is to really continue to listen to our staff, our teachers, and listen to our parents. Now, I will tell you, if we could bring every student back and we had a facility large enough to six feet distance everyone in our buildings and on our buses, we would bring every student back. We believe it's better for students to be in the classroom than not be in the classroom. We would love to see our students back every day, which is why, for our youngest learners, such as our preschoolers, those students that are most vulnerable in some of our alternative schools that have small groups and our special needs families with exceptionalities, we will be allowing for those students to come to school every day in those cases. Those classrooms that are already small and have always been, and some of them are one-to-one, we will continue to allow for those to operate as they normally would. So are there questions so far? Yes, ma'am. Beyond that, before we move forward?
Yes. Okay, so on the remote days, when we're in Phase Two in the hybrid model, on the remote days, the expectation is that the students who are learning from home, oh, even in Phase One, so just on learning remotely, the expectation is that students will be online for six, seven hours, that they'll be with their devices for the regular length of the school day?
Well, on the remote days, they will be remote learning. What that looks like, at this time, the teaching and learning team, they're looking at how to chunk out lessons in a way that does meet the guidelines that KSTE has outlined in terms of the minutes, but also is in a way that doesn't drain a student sitting and looking at a screen the entire time. So that takes a great deal of creativity, but I have faith in our staff. We, again, were hoping for maybe a variety of ways in which we could accomplish that. And again, I believe our staff, our teachers will come up with some ways, knowing what we have to work with. We literally cannot bring every student back just because of the social distancing requirement as well, knowing that we're in this space. I believe they will creatively come up with some great, engaging kinds of lessons. Our staff development has now changed to allow for that to happen as well in some creative ways. So that's the answer to that. I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Risley to continue with Ms. Wallace leading the rest of this portion, and then I'll come back in on this end. Operations is next. We still have some instructional pieces. I want to turn the microphone over to Ms. Wallace. Ms. Risley will take us to this next section, and then we'll stop and answer questions. If I keep answering questions at nine o'clock, we'll still be in this very first section of the plan. Hey, for our teachers and people that are online, we are taking any questions down as a frequently asked questions document and answering it, so that you also can get the answer tonight or tomorrow and share that as well. I'll turn it over to Ms. Risley and Ms. Wallace.
Okay. The next section? So we are following IDEA laws around minutes of service for our special education students. And in fact, Dr. Harrington and her team of special ed consulting teachers have already started reaching out to families who have requested remote learning and are setting up IEP meetings so they can address those individual education plans for those families. So we're meeting their needs. ELL students and special education students are populations in which, on that Wednesday remote day, where we're doing some deep cleaning in the building, we can still pull in small groups of students to meet those individualized meetings.
The next section relates to technology. And really, I think we've talked about this a lot before in regards to digital equity. However, technology, we are speaking about the different programs, the different devices that are available for students, the different options for connectivity, and then also the different programs that are available instructionally. And so to that extent, I know that we are really excited for a variety of new programs this fall. For example, Newsella, I think, as a former social studies and English teacher, I would love that opportunity to have Newsella for my students. And so there's just a wide variety of them.
So for devices, we are looking at new devices for third through fifth grade students. And then second grade students would also be using Chromebooks this year. Those would be touch-screen Chromebooks. And then our PK, K, and ONE students will be utilizing iPads. And then secondary, we'll be using Chromebooks as well. So to Ms. Risley's point, we have explored and are moving forward with several new digital platforms. So Newsella, district-wide, both social studies teachers and language arts teachers are excited about that option. We're also looking at No Red Ink, not looking at it. We are moving forward a bit in grades 12, and that really is a language arts software that allows us writers workshop, grammar. We've also purchased Mobimax for grades eight through eight. This suite includes that, language arts, science, and social studies as a digital resource for students to gain additional practice opportunities. We are going with Naviance for our individual plan of study software at grades six through 12, and we're currently looking at discovery education as an option moving forward.
In addition, in the academic section, there is also a component focusing on culture and relationships, and really just on some principles for how teachers and school leaders can really emphasize building relationships, whether in a hybrid or remote or in-person environment. Additionally, there's a section about best practices in grading. We know that our school reopening teams will also be working out the details regarding grading, but we're really, you know, we just wanted to also emphasize some of those main points about really looking for mastery and really looking for student engagement by offering lots of choices to students.
And as it relates to grading, the KSTE document, they developed competencies, which are really our standards and identifying which of those standards are essential. And then for grading, they have provided rubrics as an option to look at moving forward.
The next section is related to support programs, and I know, as you've heard, we had a really wonderful experience with summer school this year virtually. We also offer enrichment courses, or, well, at summer school, we offered enrichment courses and also credit acquisition and credit recovery. Additionally, we offer concurrent enrollment and just other options that will still be able to be utilized during this time. The next section is related to professional learning, which is Ms. Wallace's expertise.
Okay, so we just had a couple of Zoom meetings today around new staff orientation and pre-service professional development. So those plans are well underway, and the intent is that all new staff orientation and pre-service will be virtual or online professional development. So we will have some live sessions on topics that we think we need to have more discussion around and get input and gather ideas. And then in the areas where it is just pretty straightforward, a lot of the technology training will be prerecorded modules. Staff really indicated in April that they appreciated some of that technology training being prerecorded, because they can go back, re-watch it, practice the skill, go back and re-watch it again, and continue moving forward with that. And that also allows us to offer multiple levels of all the technology. So for example, in CSO, we have offered beginning CSO, intermediate, and advanced CSO, and then we've had teachers who have created sessions for CSO specific to how they used it in first grade or second grade. So we've had the opportunity to really go through that training with those prerecorded sessions.
Are we going to need new technology in our classrooms for our teachers and instruction? And is that already in place? For the filming of, I guess filming is, I'm old, sorry.
Great question. So Ms. Bulley's question is, will we need additional or different technology than we have? So the teaching and learning team has actually been out in classrooms. Some have been joining remotely, while others are practicing using the technology in classrooms to ensure that we have what we need. So we have been able to identify some needs, like webcam and the mic. So the mic on a lot of our laptops, it does not have the range that we need, so we are looking at webcams. We've identified a webcam and used one in practice in a classroom that we believe gives us the range for kids that are working remotely, be able to hear everything that's going on in the classroom. So those are being ordered as we speak. Additionally, we have about 600 iPad fours that are really, you can't do a lot with because they're so old, but one thing you can do with them is you can use software called Splashtop to simulate a smart board. So when teachers share their screen, so that's really important for our teachers who don't have smart boards. Some of our, probably more of our high school classrooms, and particularly Topeka High and Topeka West, don't have a lot of smart boards. So those iPads will be given to those teachers to use with that program, Splashtop. So yeah, we've tried out all of that, and we've asked principals, Mr. Gallin and I are working on a Google form that will go out to principals, so that they take an audit of the technology in every classroom, so that they can make sure we have what we need in this space.
And this would be covered under our COVID bill financially?
There are multiple different funding sources that we can use, the COVID care dollars, but we can also use some Title IV technology dollars and technology dollars. Mr. Gallin, say.
You know how much this virus is going to cost us in the day?
We should be keeping a running tab. Yes.
We didn't anticipate anything. So a question about instruction, from a new teacher perspective, how are we going to support new teachers?
I'm sorry?
How are we going to support new teachers?
Supporting new teachers. So we do have mentoring plan in place, so it's a little more complicated when you're talking social distancing and online resources, but we will be providing ongoing training that new teachers can participate in virtually, led by teaching and learning. They will have an assigned mentor as well in their building, so that they have a connection right there for someone to meet and talk to. Once we get started back in school and teachers are in their classrooms teaching, teaching and learning staff can go out into schools, do this, we've done this the last several years. So consulting teachers will go out and observe and support and coach and even co-teach with many of our new teachers and support them in the classroom.
Do all of our schools have nurses or nursing professionals in them?
They all have nursing professionals, not 100% of the time. Ms. Vauder is meeting with building leaders tomorrow and going over some processes and procedures to follow.
So if we have a student who...
And we do have roving RNs also. So in a situation, we have, besides assigned to buildings, we have roving RNs, it can go out to a school.
COVID run or flu or chickenpox or whatever, it's all the same.
I will tell you, both the state plan and our plan does address having specific isolation space, so that if we have a student who is showing symptoms or a teacher, we have a place where we can isolate them that is well ventilated.
The next two sections of the plan are related to operations. They're related to nutrition programs and also to transportation as well, and facilities. So I think it'd be really helpful for Mr. Robbins to join us, as his team has really been determining the strategy for this side of the operations side. And while he's coming on to that first part, related to nutrition, I know that they have been really adamant about trying to determine the best practices for making sure that students are being socially distanced, whether in the cafeteria or whichever alternative space, whether outside that they're eating in. Additionally, I know that for nutrition services as well, they're also indicating that there should not be sharing of food, that they really need to have sanitation procedures in place constantly, all of those different pieces that are listed in both KSTE's plan and ours as well.
Mr. Robbins, are you?
Yes, I'm here. You know, one other thing, before we leave the child nutrition program section, one positive we just received word on today is that we were granted a waiver to continue the summer meal program. And what that means for Topeka Public Schools is that with that program, not only are we reimbursed at a sufficient amount, but it also enables us, unlike the regular program where we can only provide student meals for the days, the five days that they're actually in the school building or in class, the summer meal program allows us to provide meals even over the weekend for our students. So we'll be able to make sure that our students are properly fed, not only during the course of the time that they may be actually attending onsite, but even... but even when they are remote and through the weekend. So we're happy about, you know, that particular thing happening for our food program. As far as facilities, there is quite a bit of work that has taken place and is taking place to prepare our facilities to be safe and able to provide the proper environment for students and staff. You know, it begins with making sure that people that report to the building each and every day are well. They are not ill. And you know, that begins with not only the requirement to wear a mask, but also temperature checks. We have the non-contact infrared thermometers that are available for each one of our school buildings. We also have, and the board can see it on display in the entryway to the Burnett Center, a pilot apparatus that we are trying out, which is, provides a digital temperature monitoring program for us that as staff enters the building, you could look into this monitor. It has facial recognition and just hold your wrist up to the tool and it actually takes your temperature. There are some bugs that we're working out of the pilot unit that we have, but hopefully we plan to have that to a point where we can install at least one in every building to monitor temperatures. We have in every case, elementary, middle and high school, we have went in and put together trial classrooms so we could see just how many students that we could comfortably seat using social distancing at each one of those levels. So we know what the capacity would be in our schools to make sure that we could accommodate the students on the schedule that we have just shared with the board. And as Dr. Anderson has stated previously, we do have a model that is set up for the board to view at the conclusion of this meeting. We have also, we're in the process of sourcing some 22,000 different types of signs and posters that we can place throughout the buildings referencing social distancing, face masks, hand washing requirements and directional signs. So we have plenty of those that are coming. Probably the biggest issue for us to address would be that of the drinking fountains and providing water for students and staff since the recommendation from our health experts are not to use the regular water fountains. We only have scattered few of the bottle filling stations in our buildings. We are looking to either replace or modify existing drinking fountains so that they can all function as bottle filling stations. But until that is accomplished, we plan to provide safe drinking water for our students and staff by using Lindy Spring bottled water dispensers that would be strategically located throughout our school buildings along with a gallon or two gallon container that we can place in the classroom where students and staff can retrieve drinking water. That would be safe for them to get just using paper cups. There's a mask that we have. We have orders. We've received enough masks for students and staff to have two each. And we have backup. Those masks are cloth reusable masks, but we also have some backup disposable face masks if necessary. We have also received and plan to order additional hand sanitizers. We have sample of the sneeze guards that we will be using for office areas along with student desks that the board could look at that we will have in each and every one of our buildings. And where necessary, we have face shields that staff can wear as part of their PPE apparel. So we think that we have a pretty good plan going forward to make sure that our staff and our students return to a safe work environment. The deep cleanings that will take place and have been taking place ever since we've been out of school will continue. We have cleaning material that we know is effective in eliminating the virus that we are fighting. There has been training and there's documentation on how to clean all of the spaces that are in school buildings that our custodial staff is using to direct their activities. So I think that we have things fairly well covered, but we are still looking for opportunities to build upon the safe practices that we currently have in place.
Hello.
Yes.
Will elementary kids be eating in the classroom?
Will they be what?
Will they be eating breakfast, lunch in the classroom or in the cafeterias?
We don't plan for them to be in a classroom anymore than what they currently are as far as their breakfast meal currently. But we don't plan for that to expand to lunch. But we plan to have the ability to social distance, whether we use the cafeteria, gym area or whatever. But right now, we plan to avoid students eating in the classroom.
So from working in a school building, there are lots of people who come into our buildings. For instance, copy machine people to fix it, the parents that come into the building. Are we going to try to restrict communities? Well, and even like lunch buddies and mentors, are we going to try to restrict the entries into our building of people who are not part of the group A, group B?
Yes, Ms. Bulley, that is definitely part of our reopening plan is to restrict not only the entry to the building, but also restrict the use of our building. You know, we have facility rentals that we made pretty consistently across the district. And we plan to not continue that practice as long as we're under the conditions that we are.
Operations piece is related to transportation. So Mr. Robbins, I'm not sure if you'd like to explain that further as well.
If I could just interject, we have several questions on Facebook. Thank you, Facebook friends, for sending some questions in that are instructional about special education. Perfect timing on the busing piece with our special education students. We do want to mention there was a question about cleaning. How will we clean for students who are there every day? There's also a question about remote learning for our special ed families that want 100% remote. How are they going to get their therapy? We'll tell you how that's going to happen. Thank you to our DCAC suggestions. They're going to be able to come to Quentin Heights and actually have some physical therapy services acting onsite. And if Quentin Heights can't accommodate all of the needs, which Dr. Harrington suggested Quentin Heights because they have services already occurring. Families, if you're 100% remote and you have a special needs student or a student with an exceptionality, actually can come to A site and we'll make sure that we have staff providing some therapeutic services, occupational therapy and other related services. Regarding cleaning the building, and that will be the appropriate juggle. So when we say deep cleaning, entire building can't be cleaned at the exact same time. And so we know, for example, we have a preschool class that comes every day. The first thing that you should know is that preschool comes at a certain time and leaves at a certain time within the day. Our principal will create a schedule in which that room can be deep cleaned because no one else may be in the building on certain days. And then they'll be able to return to their room. So the deep cleaning will occur in a manner that the principal creates a schedule. And the custodian is actually one of the individuals on their school planning team. We believe that with all of the variables, and we love the questions because it helps us make those work. I think that addresses many of the special needs questions as well as the other items. Now, there are some calendar questions about what will this calendar look like moving forward with yesterday's announcement? I do want to share that our teachers right now, they have a committee and they're looking at all the possibilities. So we'll have to get back to individuals regarding that on Friday or Monday. Dr. Hackett, are there any other questions that came up that we want to address from our Facebook friends? And I hope, I know that's unusual that we do that, but Dr. Mickelson, I hope that's okay in this space.
Dr. Anderson, would you also address the needs of our Spanish-speaking parents and families? They're curious as to who will help them.
In regards to transitioning in and on the remote learning?
Exactly.
And so we, in addition to having our interpreters, this is the wonderful thing. Many of our administrators, in fact, some of our new administrators are bilingual. So the most recent ones are Highland Park High as well as Robinson Middle School. Of course, we know it's Scott dual language. And then several other staff members about. Mrs. Wallace actually has had one of our retired Spanish teachers teaching Spanish to several of our staff members, which we'll continue to do. But in the meantime, our interpreters that we currently have will continue to use them. If we need to expand in our services, we'll be exploring that further. But our goal is to make sure that our staff members at every school, through their plan, they will assess what kinds of needs there are and develop a plan of how they will further support any academic instructional needs in creative ways beyond what we've done. As an example, Ms. Wallace, we want to share the Scott dual language model as they really took the bull by the horns in March and created their own instructional model with our teachers. And we anticipate that that same level of creativity and innovation will occur. Ms. Wallace?
Yes, so when we started our remote learning in the spring, we, you know, at elementary, we had a website where families went and could watch those prerecorded lessons on video. And the Scott administrators and teachers said, hey, we're a dual language school and we want to be able to offer these same lessons in Spanish. And so if you go to that website, which is still up and updated, there is a link for a website for Scott dual language where they added all of their lessons in Spanish for those students to access and for parents and caregivers to access. So anticipate a lot more creativity around how we provide some of those special services that some of our schools offer.
So the staffing piece will be through our current staff determining the needs. Now, here's the thing, if our principals feel like we need more services in a particular area, we're prepared to adjust and look at how we use partner agencies to do that. One example has been the mental health. The Family Service and Guidance is now partnering with that area. So the same with our Spanish families, they feel like we need more services and our principals determine that. They can't meet the needs adequately, which we believe we will with the remote AV model. But if they feel that they can't meet that, we'll be prepared accordingly. She mentioned the Scott site, we were going to go to that, but I think we're going to continue on with our meeting and answer other questions. Anything else, Dr. Hackett, that we did not answer?
100% remote, are they still connected to their home school? And if they're a high school student who has gone completely into the remote mode, will they still graduate from their high school?
So glad you asked that, Ms. Wallace. I see her hand is on the button, almost like she's in jeopardy. Well, she wants to answer that question. First of all, the answer is yes, they still have a home school. That's the difference between remote and virtual. Remote means that I am still connected to my home school, my home school teachers, and I'm just working from home remotely. And if I wanted to be 100%, I still can participate in the activities at that school in the appropriate fashion. So I'm so glad that parent asked that question and staff. And so with that in mind, just very quickly on the site, is the site that Scott dual language created, we're going to just add that to the frequently asked questions with the link because you might not know that's there. But they have lessons from kindergarten all the way through fifth. And they have just a variety of creative activities. Additionally, that staff has helped us with actually doing some of the interpreting this summer as well. So we know they are well-prepared, not just Scott, but across the district to assist our interpreters in ways that makes sense. In fact, it's how the Twitter site will getting off and how the Facebook site has been managed. I'm going to turn it back to Ms. Rissy to go through the final session on transportation. Mr. Robbins, with our buses, can you share what our buses look like? And then Ms. Rissy, you can take it from there. Mr. Robbins, as we go back to that site and we remove the Scott piece, can you start talking a little bit about the change in buses and the requirements in terms of masks?
Yes, we have been in constant contact with Kansas Central. And they are in complete alignment with us and with the state requirements for safety relative to school bus transportation. Their school bus drivers will be wearing masks. They will be checking temperatures with students as they board buses. And the buses themselves, they're inspected every year and they have just completed the inspection for this year. We also look to, based on the most recent numbers that we've been able to obtain, particularly from Dr. Kip, we feel that we're going to be closer to being able to transport the students wanting transportation once we subtract those that have signed up for the virtual education model. We will be very close to being able to, we think, transport on a daily basis the number of remaining students. When you look at what the reduced capacity will be on buses, the requirement will be that there's only one student per seat that is allowed unless they are sibling. The only seat on a bus that we have to leave totally vacant and unoccupied would be the seat that is directly behind the school bus driver. So we expect that the 1,900 capacity that we're going to be reduced to will be sufficient to transport students. You can see the bullet points as far as what is required from a safety standpoint that is being addressed.
For the purpose of mine, this will be posted tomorrow pending the board's desire for that to occur. But for the purpose of those that are online, masks are required. And the plan outlines that to get on the bus. Masks are required to enter a building, which means students will be showing up with masks already. Despite that, we still will be providing masks and we will have two so that a student can take one, go wash it and bring it back. Now, keep in mind that students arrive with a mask. They may want to wear their own mask all day and we are perfectly fine with that, but we're prepared beyond that. In addition to our buses having the mask, it also mentions that the cleaning on buses are daily. After every time that students are dropped off, the buses have been cleaned when they go back. And they also will be cleaned at the end of their route. It lastly mentions and remember that we have a bus company of vendor service. Our bus drivers will be provided their own protection equipment, which also includes gloves and hand sanitizers. And the transportation of special needs students may be a concern because some students will have issues that could occur. So we are actually providing some additional protective wear for those students. And where needed, we are making sure we give the additional support through our special education department. So they actually will be planning how they're going to best transport some students. So they actually will be planning how they're going to best transport some students. So some students might be transported in a manner that better meets their needs based on their IEP. So IEPs are being looked at in as appropriate. They'll be modified in ways that the IEP team feels is appropriate. Any questions about buses?
Drivers are going to be taking temperatures of the children. Do we have a procedure for a child that can't get on the bus because they have a temperature? That could be pretty traumatic for a student to say can't get on the bus. Is that what it's going to look like?
Mr. Robbins?
Ms. Bulleye, I have to say that we do not have a procedure at this point. That is a good question and something that we need to address because the student would not be able to be transported and would need to return home if that was the case. So we're going to take a deeper look at that.
Bulleye, I will tell you that part of telling parents early, same with coming to school, that if your child, for example, needs to be quarantined for some reason of exposure or has a temperature, they can't come or need to be picked up, we are asking parents to prepare for that likelihood. And that can happen in many different ways, thus related and otherwise. And so as parents, as we tell parents that in advance, it's our hope that they begin to prepare, given the state that we're in, but understanding the trade-off is being able to return to school in some fashion is that trade-off. So thank you for asking that.
I believe at our high school levels that the public transportation gives out coupons or something for students to get to high school. That does not allow us the temperature taking and the mask and the cohort group. So what is that going to look like at the high school level?
I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Robbins as well. And they actually are, it costs us about over $200,000 to buy those passes and we are still providing bus passes to our secondary students. But we again, in our plan in the back, there is a statement that our school board attorney really created that lets people know we are in a pandemic. And by being in a pandemic, here are important responsibilities. But here's exposure that you may have in leaving and going in the public, using transportation or not, and coming into a school building. And that's exposure that we're giving you notice that you have. So based on how their child gets to school, whether they walk, whether they ride the bus, we're just making sure people acknowledge that piece. But we are still giving bus passes in that regard. Mr. Robbins, do you want to speak beyond that as it relates to buses and the public bus transportation for high school?
Dr. Anderson, you touched on what I was getting ready to comment on. Since it is a public mode of transportation, there isn't anything that from a school district standpoint, we will require as far as them boarding a Topeka Metro bus. But once they leave that bus and head to our school building, then, you know, they're going to have to come prepared in a mask and also subject themselves to a temperature check. And if their temperature is such that they cannot safely enter the school building, then it's going to be up to the parents to figure out a way to pick up that child and return them safely to their home.
Now, we will have, we will have an isolation space. And so for students that need to be in that space due to some symptom, COVID-related symptom, that a student will be able to have that. And many of the schools will have more than one space. That's different from the nurses' space so that the nurse can operate as they normally would outside of the COVID-related symptoms. It's important for families that are listening to know that there's a deal of, a great deal of responsibility to return a child during the course of a pandemic to school. And so we will do all that we can as a school system. The parents will have to be parents and step in. And those that are guardians will need to be guardians and take care of certain things like the mask, clothing, or how they're going to get their child to school. Even students who drive to school and are with other students, making sure the seat is appropriate. So there's some levels that we're expecting responsibility will have to be there. I will say this, if we find that large numbers of people, much like in our community, there were large numbers of people that wouldn't wear masks. So there had to be some other rules put in place. If we find that there are large numbers of people that are not complying with the steps and measures we've put in place, we may well come back to the board and ask to return to phase one. So this level of moving forward takes into account the understanding that our families want to return to school. We want to make it happen, but there's a great deal of responsibility that they all need to take into account. Okay, as we close on out with our student services section, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Risley to speak to those sections.
Thank you. The student services section actually just delineates different student support specialists, including school counselors, school psychologists, school social workers. It just delineates different practices, some best practices that they can do to support students during this time. And so going through it, one of our school counselors who actually served on the KSD team had a chance to really review this too, Mallory Jacobs, who's an amazing counselor at Whitson. So really just trying to make sure that we're laying out different ideas for how we can best support students. And then the last, the last section after that is just a statement from Lori Coke that basically explains just different pieces about, it explains different pieces about do's and don'ts for families during the pandemic. And then following from there, there's an appendix, different appendix items are links to different guidance items. And really just, and then there's also different forms for Topeka Public Schools.
As we conclude with that piece of having the mental health services and resources in the back, the last question that we've received is regarding car riders and the increased car riders. Keep in mind that because it's 50% of the students, even increased car riders, for 50% of the students will not be significant or even more than what we would normally have. But we don't anticipate that there is going to be a great deal of problematic traffic beyond what you'd see in a normal year because it's half of the students in the building. So that's the answer to that question regarding the car riders. We will stop there to see if there are any other questions that you have at this time for any members of the team.
Dr. Anderson, a quick question. We've illustrated tonight that talking through these masks is difficult. And so if you're a teacher and you need to wear a mask, how are they going to project our hearing impaired kids that can't, that are lip readers? What are the, I mean, I know those are.
So I'm so glad you asked that. For those that didn't hear, it's difficult to talk through a mask. I'm telling you, that is quite tricky. But more importantly, our early childhood students have difficulty learning without seeing your facial expressions and your pronunciation of your literacy component that you need to be able to practice and learn. So we, through our amazing purchasing department, Mrs. Henryman, purchased the mask with the plastic mouths for our pre-K students as opposed to the kind that we're wearing. That doesn't help with sound as much as it does with other items. We also have some options of face masks as well for students or staff where that's more helpful. But lastly, we also have voice amplifiers that can actually be put on a teacher with a mask on. That actually works. And so we actually have some teachers that are part of the English Language Arts Planning Committee. Ms. Foster, you all have met her, our college prep teacher. She actually invested in her own amplifier, which is relatively inexpensive. So we've shared that with technology and the technology committee has looked at that at this time. Look at a voice amplifier that even with the mask on, if you want to keep it on the full time, the traditional mask that wraps around your face, there is a voice amplifier. You can just put on your clothing and it will amplify through your mask. I do want to just kind of give a shout out to Mr. Robbins who's exploring in technology the drone resources. And so we saw that there was another district using drones for delivery. Right now, we can't find a service provider here in the Midwest, but I have full faith in Mr. Robbins that he's going to identify one. And I will tell you, in addition to that, Ms. Hackett, who is in our communication specialist, Ms. Molly Hackett, different than Ms. Dr. Jill Hackett. Ms. Molly Hackett, our K-State graduate, also graduated with her classes completed for her pilot's license to be a drone driver. So that young lady will be well-ready to take on the first drone, should we purchase our own. But we're hoping to find a service provider. So we are really hoping to provide drone delivery second semester if possible as one of these new opportunities to deliver things to homes. So with that in mind, we close with that final slide of the picture that we started with. You can tell from the team members who all pitched in this evening that we are in uncharted territory. And our commissioner was just so perfect naming his plan, navigating through change. And so as we navigate through this, at this time, we're asking our board with the plan that we have to give us kind of time we need to continue to prepare. We ask for approval of our reopen plan with the understanding that administration may make changes to this living document based on the needs that continue to arise and based on the health department information. And so knowing that, we turn it over to the board at this time regarding approval of this plan as a next step so we can take this to the next step of training and preparing from here.
Dr. Anderson, can I ask a question before we do this? I've had a burning question and I just haven't been able to ask it yet. Okay. So thinking of our English learners remotely. So what, how can we ensure that they are going to be receiving the language support services that they need remotely? Like, will they be in small groups? Will the EL teacher be able to zoom in with them in small groups?
I'll start with that. And Ms. Wallace is on her way back in to talk a little bit about EL. So in our plan, and Mrs. Risley will remind you kind of what page the EL page is on. Now, Mrs. Curry may well actually be on the call as well. But keeping in mind, as this plan gets ready to move out to the rest of the teams, what we're asking is for every team, every principal, every, for example, the EL department will now get a chance to see the plan. As soon as we can get it in their hands, then they will be asked to plan from there, what will remote learning look like, much like the fine arts people will be planning from there. So being able to give one cuter answer to any particular department, to me would devalue their voice and them really planning in a way that best meets the needs of their kids. And so, but what I can say is that we are giving some autonomy to our principals and their COVID planning teams to bring together the appropriate people to really plan how they're going to wrap services around those particular students that they're serving, whether they're special needs, whether they're EL, or whether they're students in another area. With that, the question on EL, I'll see if Ms. Wallace wants to add to that. And what page is our EL page on?
It's on page 20.
So if you're looking at the plan and you have your hard copy and you want to look at page 20, within that, it gives general information. Because beyond that general information, which, you know, that piece gives kind of the overall guide about commitment, the rest of the scheduling, which students, what are the hours? Those are things that our department would have to plan. And this document doesn't take away from that or prescribe it so narrowly that they can't have that level of autonomy. Ms. Wallace, do you want to speak as well at all to the EL question regarding how we will support students that are EL students?
Absolutely. So in elementary school, a lot of times the EL teacher might come and pull students out to provide some resources. So in the plan, we're following our instructional minute guidelines. So there is a 30-minute, what was walk intervention, what would be push-in intervention for our students. So the EL teachers, the special education teachers at that time, can push in to provide services for the students. And those students that are learning remotely that day could remote in. And again, I'm sharing this as a kind of a big picture piece, but schools have the flexibility to adjust that to meet the needs of their students.
This key piece will be flexibility, you know, that's going to be the main thing with where we are. And listening to the voice of those we serve and allowing for them to plan and have voice and what it looks like. How we got to having three options instead of one. So while it would be simpler to have just one option, like the hybrid model, that's not the voices of what our staff and parents have shared. So similarly, we look forward to kind of adjusting, as they make specific plans for their departments and we know that you have particular interests, for example, in EL, we'll make sure that our EL department and Ms. Wallace kind of connects back in on that question of, hey, now they've had time to plan. Right now, they really haven't seen a plan yet, much like KSD. Posted theirs, posted theirs a couple of days yesterday. Superintendent's just spent two hours today looking at their plan and having training. And then again, we want to make sure to get this into the hands of people again to have the ability to plan from here with their teams. Any other question that you'd like to ask that you haven't had an opportunity to ask and have answered? I'll turn it over to the board. Again, our request is for approval for our reopening plan so that teachers and principals can begin to take this plan from here and put together their school teams and start using this plan to personalize services. The plan again gives all of the three options for our community in ways that schools feel like would make sense for them. And we'll turn it over to our fourth president.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. So we've heard summary of the plan and she's asking for our approval to proceed with some flexibility to modify the plan as conditions arrive. So I'm entertaining a motion to proceed.
So this is not under action item? Does this need to be changed?
It is under action.
As an action item?
So. Dr. Morrison, did you make a motion?
Sure.
We have a motion and Dr. Morrison and Dr. Boenbry covers a second. Is there any other discussion on this?
Yeah, this is a, I'm sorry, I had to switch laptops because I can't. Has anyone else also received an inordinate amount of concern about starting soon? You know, both from parents but also from staff? And is that?
I think we've all received, you know, a couple dozen emails in the last couple of days. At least I have anyway. Everybody else is nodding their head yes.
I mean, it seems like this, this plan has a lot of options for students and for parents. But if you're, you're a staff, you have to go in. Like it, it seems like it. I don't know, maybe I'm understanding this plan wrong. But it seems like if you're a teacher or a para or a staff support, you have to, I mean, on September 9th or whatever that day is, even potentially before then, no matter what the situation is outside in the community in terms of spread. Yeah, I don't know, is that, am I reading this wrong? Am I understanding this plan incorrectly?
What I heard anyway was faculty and staff who have a medical or situation that would preclude them from attending work, work on it with human resources on a case-by-case basis. I do think that we're taking the guidance of our local and county health officials rather than us plain health officials. We're relying on their guidance. So while phase one, we hope is relatively brief, it may be extended based on their councils. So that's my understanding anyway. And I would, I echo those concerns, Mr. Munoz, and that I have some concerns and I just urge us to go and proceed cautiously. Dare on the side of caution rather than oppression. So I think, and I think that's where we're headed. But I understand those concerns as well.
And Mr. Munoz, like you, we, and Mr. Robbins, he oversees personnel. And my apologies, President, I may answer that question. So Mr. Munoz, and I'll invite Mr. Robbins in to comment on that regarding personnel since he is on the line. And then if there's a need for me to add to that, I will. I know the question came earlier about when people are remote, can they work from home? Especially when students aren't there. And certainly if it's dangerous in the community to do so, to come out or come into a building, what does that look like? Mr. Robbins, I'm going to turn it over to you to start in that conversation in regards to. in regards to personnel. If it is dangerous and problematic to return on the day after Labor Day, if the COVID numbers are high and we feel that it's not appropriate to return to school, how might we respond, Mr. Robbins, in regards to faculty?
Well, you know, I think that's when we look at whether or not we need to adjust our plan. You know, as Dr. Anderson had mentioned, you know, this was a living document. And based on the situation and conditions in our community relative to the virus, the plan could, could be revised at any point in time. So I think that, you know, we'll look at it, we'll assess it. But unless there is a need to change, then yes, you know, we will be expecting for staff to report to duty unless there is a situation that prevents them from doing so. And as we had mentioned earlier, you know, they can reach out to human resources and those will be handled and addressed on a case-by-case basis.
So Mr. Munoz, with that guidance of what Mr. Robbins just said, I'm just going to play a little hypothetical for you. So with that hypothetical, let's say on the day after Labor Day, it is, the COVID numbers continue to rise to such a degree that we feel that students should not come in the building and that it's unsafe. That is the time, much like a snow day, when we say staff can be remote and work remotely, which could, could be from home, I will tell you that. If it's unsafe for us to walk out the door and come into a building, we're not going to ask people to come into a building if it's unsafe for that to happen. I think that's part of the flexibility. And it is not in our plan right now, it's not written in the plan, that staff are required, if it's unsafe, to come into a building. That's the beautiful thing about this plan, it gives us some flexibility. Now, we will share that if it is unsafe for students to return in large numbers and to congregate in that regard, and the health department advises us against that, but it's fine for a staff to return individually, then we'll be making that decision at that time. And it's why we pretty much added the health department information into that. We right now don't feel, and as you may know, I previously asked for a delayed start in both the survey and to our board members, because we don't feel right now it would be appropriate for staff to return. We think it's unsafe right now to return. If you were to ask me next week and we were still in the same health conditions, I would still say right now it is unsafe for staff to return. So if on the 9th, we are still in the same space of the COVID pandemic spread that we are right now, I would still say that it is unsafe for staff to return. Could we potentially do remote? The students have their computers and we could certainly do that. And teachers could do that from home if that was necessary. And we are prepared to fully support that if it's too unsafe to return. Now, ideally, most teachers, many teachers have shared they'd like to get back in the classroom. We understand that and we're going to try to make that happen for teachers and kids. So, Mr. Munoz, in reading the plan, you don't see, I believe, a requirement in terms of remote, of what that looks like. Ideally, all teachers would still be coming to school if it's okay for teachers to do that. We have approximately 20 to about 50 teachers in a building, depending on which building you're at. As you know, at every school, we have approximately 200, up to 17,000 students. I'm sorry, 1,700 students at any given school. So that's a really big difference in numbers. If it's unsafe and we're in the conditions we are now, Mr. Munoz, teachers would not be returning. And I'm so glad you asked that, so we can clarify that for you as well as our staff. But remote learning could certainly begin at that time. Does that help answer that question, Mr. Munoz and other members?
It does, yeah. I just, there's a lot of pressure, you know, to, to receive this and then to go, turn around and to, to approve it. And I'm sure that if I have questions, you know, lots of our staff will have questions about it and, and parents as well. So, yeah, I just, it's a lot to take in right now for me. And so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, how do we do what's best for staff and for students? And, you know, there had been talk for just a little bit about, you know, and I think you mentioned it's a 60-day potential, you know, delay, you know, or something along those lines. I, I thought, do you know, when, when you and your staff were coming up with this plan, did you give any consideration to that before you came to this ultimate decision, draft of a plan?
With that, Mr. Kip is on the line and he's going to go back to the survey question because that was a question I added on the survey. Because I, I suggested that we ask the question about a 60-day delay, which would certainly have taken us to after Labor Day. And that delayed start was the idea of starting with remote learning. And what our, it's not that we wouldn't open schools, it's that we would open with remote learning. And what we've heard is that our families, staff are agreeable to delaying an in-person start, staff and students, and to start remotely. We've heard that, which is why we created a plan that gives us flexibility to remain in Phase 1 for as long as we deem we need to. And that Phase 1 could be for students. But Phase 1 could also be that remote teaching and, and serving students could be remotely, as it was in March through June. Mr. Kip, what does that survey data tell us from the very first survey that specifically said, would you approve a 60-day delay?
Yes, Dr. Anderson. In terms of the 60-day delay comfort level, parent reported 56% very comfortable to comfortable. And staff reported a 63% comfort level with that delay.
So that number let us know that roughly 40 to 50% of the people were not comfortable with a 60-day delay based on that very first survey. Now, keep in mind, that survey was parents and students, parents and staff. And the larger survey, Mr. Kip, again, the most recent one, which went to all of our staff, and we had great response to that particular survey, more so than even the first one. That survey, can you share about the delayed remote start? That's one thing we know that people definitely do support, I believe. Mr. Kip, do you want to share those numbers?
Yeah, and, and just to follow up, based on that first survey, it, it led to the, the need obviously for a second survey specifically targeting staff. And with, with that same question of the delay, it was almost near 80% of the staff agreed with the delay.
So, Mr. Munoz, based on that, we are saying within this plan that our recommendation is a delayed start if needed with Phase 1. Well, we start off with Phase 1 no matter what. So we're going to start off with remote learning as a first step. The question of how long we stay in remote learning is in part depending on the health department's guidance. And we have two groups, students, it's possible that students in large numbers shouldn't come in a building. But it's possible that the health department could say that we are in a condition that staff could return and they would not make the decision. They would pretty much let us know about community spread. Right now, the community spread is such that we would not be supportive of staff returning. If we're in this space, three weeks from now, we are not supportive of staff returning. We would be supporting, again, the remote start that right now is written in the plan for as long as we need to do that, until we think it's safe to return. Does that help clarify that for you? Both the response from the survey as well as the plan moving forward so that we can be prepared to receive our new teachers, I believe, next week? And we can begin planning on what their schedule will look like and as well as our students moving forward from there. The idea is to have a plan prepared for that. Any more questions, Mr. Munoz?
Dr. Morrison? I would just like to just add my comment and maybe it'll help Mr. Munoz, maybe not. I've received all those emails as well, probably double figures of amount of emails from staff. And they're very scared and I understand that they're very scared. The beauty of this thing is that it's flexible. And that flexibility, you've got to start somewhere. I mean, we could just say the kids won't come to school all semester. But that's just not a good start. Therefore, medically, I think this is flexible enough that we can get going with this, with this, with school.
Reverend Williams?
I share some of the same concerns that Mr. Munoz has, has expressed. And coming aboard me for this, you know, apprehensive of the final decision. I mean, the thing is, this keyword, this is live and flexible. And it's depending upon the current circumstances, that's why I'm supportive. But somewhat still reservations.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
Yeah, same. Lots of anxieties and apprehensions. I, I feel that I can support this plan because I know that our district leaders will continue to consult with the health department and will not send our staff and our students into brick and mortar buildings. Will not send anybody into harm's way until we are 100% certain that it's safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. See no other hand? Ready to vote for you, Rob? There was a motion and a second. Reverend, Dr. Morrison. So we're voting by hand. All those in favor, raise your hand. Mr. Munoz, please acknowledge, yes or no? We'll hold for a moment while we try to reconnect Mr. Munoz.
So for those that are listening, one of our board members lost connection or either their computer may have stopped. So we're going to do the old-fashioned way, which I love, and that's to use the telephone. So as he's on speaker, and we're calling him now.
Didn't work.
And he's calling back. Yes. All right, we back, we back in the old-fashioned way, Mr. Munoz.
So, Mr. Munoz.
Not, not a problem. But you know what? That gives us the real feeling of not having broadband across Topeka and why it's so important. Wow, that was a real life example. All right, Mr. Munoz, just to bring you up to speed. The other board members have all, they were waiting on you to finish the vote. We do want you to know that at this time, the plan as one commissioned by Dr. Morrison and others gives the flexibility and at this point, our students and staff would be starting remotely from home. So staff is not coming into brick and mortar. We just want to make sure we clarify that for you at this time. And then when we choose to move out of Phase 1, we have the flexibility of what that looks like. Now, as you made your comments, it looks like I got some text messages regarding when can teachers come in their buildings, so I'm getting the opposite side. For teachers that want to come in, when it's safe to do so, we'll be allowing that. And we'll do that on a case-by-case basis. So that's the answer to your question, Mr. Munoz. If you didn't have any other questions, the vote is right now live. And the, the question for you is the vote and I guess the post-question. I'll turn that over to our clerk. ... ease of use or to address additional matters that may arise as conditions and situations change.
So, Mr. Munoz, if you would cast your vote, please.
So, Mr. Munoz, you may not have heard that if Dr. Kip was to ask, can you cast your vote if you are voting for the reopen plan for 2021, knowing that it's by law, that it's updated along with the, are you voting in favor of Mr. Munoz or not, or abstaining?
Um, I'll vote in favor. Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you from Dr. Mickelson. I'll leave you on speaker so you can hear the final conclusion of this meeting.
Ms. Lester, would you?
Motion carries, you can.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is one action item to approve, precalculus textbook resource. I'll entertain a motion to. Dr. Morrison offers a motion and Reverend Williams offers a second. Is there any other discussion? Talking about math books. Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Vote by hand.
We're voting by hand. All those in favor? Mr. Munoz? Thank you, Mr. Munoz. He votes aye.
All votes are in. Motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Lester. So next on the agenda is board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Campbell.
Okay, so I feel very confident that Topeka Public Schools is prepared and ready to meet the challenge of, of starting school, be it remote, virtual, and then when it's safe, the hybrid model. And I commend TPS, that our reopening committee, which I know consists of many talented educators, on creating this comprehensive phased-in, safety-first plan. And I'm just amazed at the magnitude and quality of work and attention to detail. And I'm grateful for all the work that went into this. Thank you.
I really appreciate the matrix as part of the plan that maybe others cannot see that gives directions for the buildings to create their committees and move forward with it. And so I really love that detailed part of it. I really appreciate all the people who put the work into this. And I don't even know how we'll be able to thank them in the future. But for right now, let's just thank them for what they've done and the work that they're going to be putting into it as we change and go forward. I also wanted to thank our group of educators who were on the KSDE committee that helped write this. I think I can say most of their names. I'll need help with one. Cheryl Dela Cruz, Mallory Jacobs, Jason Meyer, Amy Glinka, and Anne.
Gorsuch.
Somebody say it louder. Gorsuch. Thanks to all of them that put so much of their time in this summer, not only there, but probably here, and the hours and mental drain that they put in. It was really amazing. And I also wanted to do a remembrance that we had a memorial service this week for Mrs. Ruth Ann Scales Everett, who was part of the Brown versus Board. Her mother brought a suit against Topeka Public Schools that really set us up to be leaders in the nation in equity. And then to have a superintendent that is spreading that equity in her councils. I just so appreciate what that has done for our nation. And I know we still have a lot of work to do, but it always keeps it in the forefront, knowing that we are part of that law. And also a thank you for Dr. Anderson. I know she's on so many commissions and that puts us out ahead also to keep our teachers safe and our students safe because she is part of that governor's commission. And so we thank her for putting in that effort as well. Thank you.
Dr.? One more.
I think if this group had been in Philadelphia...
I think if this group had been in Philadelphia in 1783, they'd have probably come up with a competition a couple of years earlier.
Thank you. Dr. Morrison?
Um, I'm very brief. I sat in on, uh, the technology committee. I just kind of watched what was going on. Oh my gosh, what, what you guys went through to try to get the right technology at the right spot at the right time is very amazing. I'm su- I'm sure you figured it all out. I left after a while because I, there wasn't anything I could do about it and I didn't know anything about it. But, um, oh my gosh, I mean, that, this is a hell of a lot of work. Oh my gosh. Uh, you should be proud of the, the final. I know there's going to be glitches, but all you can do is got to have a place to start so you can get going teaching kids.
Thank you, Dr. Morrison. Dr. Williams?
Miss Bowley stole my, uh, comment. That's what I, all right. Very sweet lady, her mother was as well. Uh, this afternoon, uh, Dr. Anderson was keynote speaker for, uh, Time for This Weapon Army. I only got to hear about 15 minutes of it, but she did just be proud. So it's good that, you know, I'm proud to be a part of TPC Public Schools. We say the cream always rises to the top, and that's what we did.
Mr. Munoz, I don't know if, is it my microphone? You're, you have any closing comments?
Yeah, just a quick couple. You know, uh, first off, uh, I want to, um, say thank you to, to you who put this plan together. You know, in, in this imperfect world, the times we find ourselves, it's really hard to put a, a plan together that addresses everybody's needs and concerns. And I think this, this does a lot of it. And obviously we, everybody recognizes that there's still a lot of work, uh, to be done in order to get it, uh, to mold it even, into an even better state. So thank you all for all of your work. And I just want to say, um, this was news, I think, to, to a lot of, some individuals out there was to the graduates who were expecting a graduation on the 25th. I, I just want to tell them how much we know that it hurts, that I'm sure that you, you and, and family members were looking forward to celebrating and going up on stage and that it pains us to, to, to cancel it just as much as it probably, uh, hurts you all to hear, uh, not to have that special moment, but that, that this is a decision based on health and, you know, as, as a community. And so it's reflective of our communities, you know, you know, focus on, on this particular issue. So it, it really highlights the fact that we, we all have, that our decisions have implications in lots of different areas and unfortunately, uh, for the graduation, it just wasn't able to, to, to be put together. And, um, the, the last thing that I would say is that this plan is, um, it's complicated and complex as, as we sort of, we've gone through over the last couple of hours. Um, and my, my biggest hope is that we'll work with all of those parties that are, that are interested part of this plan. So teachers and staff, uh, paras, everybody, I think, needs to be bought in. I think to me, going forward, that's the biggest part of this process is bringing individuals in, um, you know, laying out what we think, um, going forward in the next couple of months looks like and then being open to hearing, um, what they see as, as, um, fine tuning in this plan. They're to make sure that everybody believes in this plan. Because if, if people don't believe in it, it's going to be really hard to execute it. So that would be my, my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Munoz. My own comments are very brief, but, uh, wanted to thank the administration for your persistence in seeking out input from shareholders and the DCAC also for, for their efforts to make sure that we heard, uh, from interested patrons and parents and staff. One other thing that I failed to mention earlier is I know Mr. Robbins is working with the paraeducators and trying to figure out a solution to make sure that they get compensated fairly and, and don't go too long without a paycheck, um, that they were expecting to get, but now with an 18-day delay. Um, so he's trying to figure out what legally he's capable of and still a viable option for every, all the people involved. So, um, let's TBD, I guess, but we work on a solution. That will cause me to adjourn.